Hearing of the Standing Committee on Law and Justice 2022 Review of the Workers' Compensation Scheme. The inquiry forms part of the committee's regular review of the workers' compensation scheme in accordance with its oversight role under Section 27 of the State Insurance and Care Governance Act 2015. The current review has a particular focus on the rise in psychological claims. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. Today, we will be hearing from a number of stakeholders, including unions, industry representatives, mental health research and advocacy organisations, business associations and the independent review office. While we have many witnesses with us in person, some will be appearing via video conference today. I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via Parliament's website. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness in accordance to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within 21 days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. In terms of the audibility of the hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone. As we have a number of witnesses in person and via video conference, it may be helpful to identify who questions are directed to and who is speaking. For those with hearing difficulties who are present in the room today, please note that the room is fitted with induction loops compatible with hearing aid systems that have telecoil receivers. Finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our first witnesses. Could each witness, starting from my left, please state their name and position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Angus Skinner, Research Manager, Police Association of New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Natasha Flores, Unions New South Wales, Work Health Safety and Workers' Comp Industrial Officer. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Nicole Jess, President of the Public Service Association, also Chairperson of the Prison Officers Vocational Branch. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Sherry Haywood, Legal Industrial Officer for the CFMEU Construction and General Division. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
David Atkin, Executive Officer, Construction Industry Drug and Alcohol Foundation. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So let me go.
Thank you. And online, Mr Mansfield? We can't hear Mr Mansfield, you might be on mute.
Yes, I was. Sorry Chair, I don't have the affirmation in front of me to read. I'm not confident of recalling it.
That's okay, bear with me one moment.
Yep.
You are now... Hold on, I'll bring it up so we don't stop it. Bear with us one moment.
You're fine, my apologies.
If you could repeat after me, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare...
I solemnly and truly and sincerely declare...
And affirm that the evidence...
And affirm that the evidence...
Now about to be given by me...
Now about to be given by me...
Shall be the truth...
Shall be the truth...
The whole truth...
The whole truth...
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
And sorry, I'll just finish my introduction. Alan Mansfield, Workers' Comp Officer with the Australian Manufacturing Workers' Union.
Thank you. And I would now like to start by asking if any of the witnesses would like to make a short statement and if witnesses could please keep it to no more than a couple of minutes each.
I would first like to acknowledge the Gadigal of the Eora Nation, the traditional custodians of these lands, and pay my respects to their elders past, present and emerging. The fundamental and confronting reason we are here today focusing on psychological injury is that psychological harm caused by work has increased over the past decade and yet we have not improved the outcomes of preventative, recovery or return to work efforts. We cannot obscure this trend by saying that this is just reflective of better mental health awareness or improvements regarding stigma and willingness to report psychological injury and seek help. This is not true. The most consistent and reliable longitudinal data regarding the mental health of workers shows the increase in psychological injuries and claims made in the workers' compensation scheme is a genuine deterioration in mental health of workers and the mental health impact caused by work, not a reporting phenomenon or an increased awareness. We all like to think we are making society better for those who will come after us, but regarding mental health in our workplaces, we are actually passing on worse conditions to the next generation. Creating workplace cultures that prioritise psychosocial safety, that eliminate or control psychosocial risks, support injured workers and assist them to return to work should be the top priority of all employers, government, unions and other stakeholders. As this inquiry is well aware, the human, economic and budgetary costs of allowing the current trends of psychological harm to continue should be considered intolerable. Workplaces and policymakers can no longer sustain prioritising operational demands to the detriment of the health of the people we rely on to perform work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unions New South Wales thanks the committee for the opportunity to appear at today's hearing. In Australia, we apply a preventative approach to work health and safety and so if this is done correctly and done well, we can avoid injuries from occurring, both physical and psychological. Our submission addresses what we believe to be failings in the work health safety system and any increase in injuries of any kind is usually always a result of a failure in risk management. We know hazards that cause psychological injuries, we know how to control the hazards. Psychosocial hazards need to be controlled in the same way physical hazards are controlled using the hierarchy of controls. Same risk management approach to eliminate or minimise hazards is applicable. Employers continue to blame individuals with mental health conditions for their failings. Mental health conditions are not relevant to the psychological injuries caused by poor risk management. Any person is vulnerable to injuries when hazards are not controlled. Low level control measures continue to be applied. We know how to prevent psychological injuries, we just need to do this. We need employers and governments to adequately staff workplaces. We need all workers to receive ongoing meaningful training to ensure all workers can undertake their work safely. We need workers to be treated with dignity and respect and for workers to have some degree of control over the work they do and professional judgement to be trusted. Where an injury has occurred, the workers' compensation system will continue to cause further harm to workers if it remains brutally adversarial. The current system is the cause of many secondary psychological injuries. A kind of more caring approach to claimants could reduce secondary psychological injuries. Thank you.
The PSA would also like to thank us, giving us the opportunity to present today. The issue of psychological injury has long been ignored and misunderstood. However, psychological injury is now widely recognised as being as important as a visible physical injury in terms of impacting upon the ability of an individual to perform their role and functions. As a trade union representing 40,000 employers across the state, many of whom are on the frontline, we are increasingly aware and concerned of the long-term unrecognised impact of psychological injury on both our members and the wider implications of these on the population of the state. WorkSafe Australia defines psychological injury as "a range of cognitive, emotional and behavioural symptoms that interfere with a worker's life and can significantly affect how they feel, think, behave and interact with others." Psychological injury may include such disorders as depression, anxiety or post-traumatic stress disorder. Job stress is commonly used to describe physical and emotional symptoms which arise in response to work situations, but it is not in itself a disorder or a psychological injury. Given this definition, it is not difficult to grasp the range of environments and situations to which our members are exposed, which can and do give rise to the causation of psychological injury. In recent years, our members have had to deal with a range of situations, ranging from environmental disasters such as bushfires and major flooding, through to localised incidents such as individualised workplace bullying, job insecurity, shift work or individualised traumatic events such as dealing with death in corrective custody. The well-recognised impact of psychological injury includes, but are not limited to, mental health, increased anxiety, depression, irritability, poor concentration and disturbed sleep. Any one of these can lead to lower productivity and increased risk of accidents and disrupted relationships at home and at work. Irrespective of the setting or circumstances, each and every occasion results in unseen psychological injury. Whereas with other professions, roles, the impact of psychological injury is taken as a given. With the majority of our members, their roles are not recognised as being exposed to the potential to psychological injury. It is well recognised that early diagnosis and intervention in dealing with the consequences of psychological injury is critical if the long-term outcomes and costs are to be minimised, both from a personal and organisational perspective. The costs of wide-ranging and are far wider than simply financial. Unrecognised and untreated psychological injury can destroy careers. As an organisation, we are aware of unrecognised and untreated psychological injury leading to individuals taking their own lives. The cost of psychological injury in this context is incalculable. We cannot stress enough how paramount it has become for psychological injury to be widely recognised across the wider state, workforce and therefore be treated accordingly with the appropriate care. Given the nature of the roles undertaken by many of our members, unfortunately, some suffer physical injuries in their workplace whilst performing their duties. The difficulties encountered by our members in having to navigate the cumbersome and bureaucratic nature of the workers' comp system as it is today is in itself a stressful process. This can often lead to a secondary psychological injury, thus exacerbating the original physical one. This helps no one, neither our members, their employees, state organisation or the general population of New South Wales our members seek to serve. Thank you.
Thanks.
The CFMEU welcomes the opportunity to address the committee this morning. We recognise the committee's intention to focus on the increase in psychological workers' compensation claims. However, that focus should not be solely on the workers' compensation system. The focus should be on prevention and how we support our community to gain access to the necessary and dwindling mental health services. This is a safety and a public health issue that is not caused by the workers' compensation system, although it does impact upon it. We acknowledge that the government has developed the mentally healthy workplace strategy and we recognise the good work, especially from my colleagues in the union movement, in creating the psychosocial code of practice. However, neither of these initiatives have made their way into the construction industry. Strategies are meaningless without a regulator willing to implement and enforce them. We do not have a safety regulator willing to enforce the code of practice. Unfortunately, as with many hazards, Safe Work is an absent regulator in this field. Instead, the construction industry has taken on the initiative of providing prevention training, trauma counselling and general counselling in partnership with Foundation House, of which Mr Atkin is the executive officer. Foundation House administers the Foundo Blue Programme that focuses on mental health wellness, suicide prevention and building confidence in supporting help-seeking behaviour from within the industry. Through its training, construction workers are taught how to recognise symptoms in their co-workers and how to talk to them in a constructive and supporting manner. In addition to the training, Foundo Blue also provides trauma counselling in the unfortunately all-too-common event of a fatality or a serious workplace incident. They are also on hand to provide general counselling, whether in a one-off capacity or more long-term. With the assistance of Foundo Blue, the industry has been able to tackle mental health concerns before they become workers' compensation claims. The industry has filled the void left by the lack of proactive prevention from the safety regulator. Of course, there is always more that can be done and it is with sadness that I note, the unionists have found out this morning, that in the last week, we have lost two of our members to suicide. These were good men with families who were unable to escape their deteriorating mental health. This sad situation highlights the need for better access to mental health resources in this state. Our focus should be on how we can support organisations like Foundation House, who run extremely successful programmes, and how we can utilise the research and the teachings that these organisations bring to the table. Mr Atkin is here to provide the committee with any clarification it needs as to how the programme works and its success. Lastly, the CFMEU is concerned about the pace in which CIRR and the government are seeking to introduce legislation to alter the workers' compensation system. The excuse of McDougall recommended does not absolve the government or CIRR of the need to conduct full consultation on serious issues that affect injured workers. By way of example, the commutation provisions which have now been removed from the State Insurance Care and Governance Bill were included with very little consultation with stakeholders. In fact, if we look back at the submissions filed, it shows that the majority of stakeholders recommended a separate full consultation on the matter. This is not the only incident of the government trying to rush legislation. The McDougall recommendations cannot be read in isolation of each other. They recognise that changing the system is a big piece of work, given the interconnectedness of the current provisions. This piecemeal approach is not useful and it can result in unintended consequences. We urge the committee to recommend that the McDougall recommendations be looked at as a whole piece of work.
Mr Atkin, did you have anything?
No.
You're fine. Mr Mansfield?
Yes, I would like to just speak to our introduction to the submission and our conclusion. Thank you for the opportunity today to speak on behalf of the AMW. I recognise the land on which I work from in Melbourne today. The AMW represents many thousands of workers who perform work of a hazardous nature that exposes their physical health and psychological health to hazards and risks which impact their safety while working and commuting and travelling. The manufacturing industry remains overrepresented for interactions with the workers' compensation scheme. With regard to psychological health and safety, matters including injury, illness and disease, those that come to the AMW's attention are the most complex and difficult to resolve with employment, capacity and income loss significantly nearly all circumstances. I will highlight that we have spoken to this matter and other matters in past submissions beginning in May 2012 to outline the harms arising from psychological health and safety hazards. And recently, AMW described the problem for workers in its submission to the Safe Work Australia's Consultation Regulation Impact Statement, 2008 pages 7 to 17. I don't intend to speak to that extract that I've highlighted, but I would recommend that if time is available to the members of the committee, that they look at that submission. To focus on the increase in psychological claims, as the committee is doing, it is necessary to consider both prevention and reaction, the workers' compensation domain and the work health and safety domain. The work health and safety, WHS, domain can prevent and/or mitigate injury, whether illness or disease. The workers' compensation domain is focused upon injury management and return to work, along with other aspects of workers' compensation. Clearly though, in producing the objectives of the New South Wales legislation, the parliament envisaged a workers' compensation scheme, a scheme that contributed to prevention. See objectives A, B and C below. And I'll just read objective A from the act. "To assist in securing the health, safety and welfare of workers and in particularly preventing work-related injury." I'm just going to go to another part of our submission. The workers' compensation domain can contribute clearly to prevention in doing so, though it must be aligned with the work being done in work health and safety domain. If there is a desire and ambition to implement best practice that goes above, then that would be a worthwhile ambition for the workers' compensation domain. However, it cannot do work that is contradictory or leads to confusion about what is required to ensure health and safety. The main object of the act is to provide for a balanced and nationally consistent framework to secure the health and safety of workers and workplaces by a) protecting workers and other persons against harm to their health and safety and welfare from the elimination or minimisation of risks arising from work or from the specified types of substances or plant; and two) in furthering subsection 1A, regard must be had to the principle that workers and other persons should be given the highest level of protection against harm to their health and safety and welfare from hazards and risks arising from the work or from specified types of substances or plant. That is from the objects of the Work Health and Safety Act. I'll leave my opening there. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you everyone for those opening statements and for coming along today. I'll start off with a couple of questions and then I'll hand over to my colleagues. One, obviously the focus of this inquiry is into the psychological claims that of recent years has been going up quite quickly, quite drastically compared to where it was. If you look back at sort of 2015, 2016, it was quite flat in terms of the growth of psychological claims. But of late, over the last few years, there has been a drastic increase in psychological claims. And I was wondering, in your discussions with your members, what do you think is potentially driving that or leading to that that significant increase in psychological claims compared to where it was a few years ago?
So it's fairly uncontroversial that the main drivers behind the bulk of psychological injuries, in particular the ones that are difficult to recover from and difficult to return to work, are driven by, or at least exacerbated by, factors which can be described as organisational factors. So not necessarily related to the job content that workers are performing, but the actual conditions that they find in their workplace, psychosocial risks, things like work intensification, the job demands placed on workers, lack of control over the manner in which they perform their work and complexity of work. So I think a good starting point, if the committee is looking for further evidence on that principle. I know Black Dog made a submission to the inquiry and they referenced one of their reports, which is the Modern Work Report, and it uses data amongst other things from the Hilda survey and that directly addresses the question of why organisational factors are more harmful today than they may have been 10 years ago.
Any other contributions?
Look, I'd just agree entirely with what Angus has said. Certainly organisational factors are, I think, the major contributing factor. I don't work directly with members at Unions New South Wales, I work with affiliates whom I'm surrounded with. But the stories that I hear are the story that Angus just told. Basically, people are expected to do more with less. And I was at a conference where some of my colleagues were and I came back last night. All I can say is my flight was chaotic, the staff were abused, sworn at, yelled at. We were hours late, they just didn't have enough staff. And I witnessed what would have been an incredibly stressful moment for those people trying to basically get three airlines off the ground with one staff member. And thousands, you couldn't even see the gate lines, the crowds were so intense and huge. So it was a real life example that I experienced coming home last night from Melbourne. I felt extremely sorry for those staff, the few that were there.
I think we should also recognise that psychological claims are not necessarily lodged when the symptoms first appear. And most people seek treatment without the necessity of putting in a workers' compensation claim. Unfortunately, we do have a dwindling resource in terms of access to mental health services, both for psychologists but also psychiatrists. If you've ever had the unfortunate pleasure of having a mental health plan, you might understand how difficult it is just to get an appointment, let alone ongoing assistance with your mental health condition. So that's when we talk about it being also a public health issue, that's what we're talking about. Most people have taken on the responsibility themselves in the past, now they don't have that and so they're exercising their right to make a workers' comp claim.
I'd like to add that the PSA represent a wide range of different government agencies. Our membership is a cross-section. After the floods, we've had many members that have not been able to return from police radio. We've had many members from SES that worked through difficult and dangerous situations and were taking phone calls. And they'll never be able to return back to work again because of the stress that they'd endured in that first 48 hours of those floods and bushfires. We've got people in corrective services that are assaulted on a continual basis and there's no proper debriefs that happen. The access to Converge is hard, which is our EAP's providers. There's so many different things, the training, the processes that need to be put into place after critical incidences of proper debriefs, proper training for managers, proper training for staff to self-evaluate how they're feeling. That's not in the workplace, we don't have that. It's basically just get back on the horse and do the job again. We really need to put money into the front end to save the money at the back end.
The last two years has been very difficult for so many workers because of COVID. It's changed the way we work for many, as well as additional pressure on people's jobs that during lockdown, that they might not have those jobs in the future. Do you have any evidence, anecdotal or otherwise, from your members about the additional stresses on their jobs that came over the last two years? Or even how potentially working from home has changed, completely changed things?
We don't need anecdotal evidence for emergency services, there certainly has been a formal study into that. The exact name of the report escapes me at the moment, but I can provide that on notice if it's of use.
That'd be great, thank you.
But that surveyed emergency services, so health workers, police, a lot of work types that were involved directly in responding to COVID. And it measured that the increase in stress that they faced was significant and it did translate to a perceivable trend in mental health and in injury claims, which is probably reflected... claims, which is probably reflected in the data submitted by uh C I R A. I would think that they would, um, that there is a measurable um trend from COVID. Uh, but also we shouldn't underestimate that the increase in regards to psychological harm did predate COVID as well. So it can't be limited to an assumption that COVID is causing the trend or that the solution is only related to, to the impact of COVID.
That's right, it was, seems like it was going up quite significantly even before twenty twenty, so it wasn't just a result of, of that, although it might be one factor. Yeah.
And work, working from home has had, I guess, um, some negative effects, but also some positive effects for some people. So I don't think we can just say that it, it's a bad thing outright, but um it's given some people flexibility that they didn't have previously. Um, but as Angus said, the people who are on the frontline, the health workers, the teachers, police, et cetera, I think um those are the, the industries and the study that Angus pointed to would be um a vital tool in assessing, I guess, the effect that COVID had.
I'll um hand over to some of my colleagues, Mr Deonam.
Sure, thank you, and thank you all for your attendance today. And my first place on the record that uh I worked with Miss Jess at the P S A for many years, and I'm also a financial member of the C F M E U.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you're a member of all unions, aren't you?
Not all unions, not all unions, a couple, but uh, I, I just wanted to firstly um uh ask about the implementation of the Code of Practice around psychological hazards. It's been in place since May twenty twenty-one. And I, I note in the Unions New South Wales submission, Miss Flores, you make reference to the situation of a nurse tragically killed. Uh, and it highlights, I think, an issue around uh some of the compliance measures that uh I think Miss Hayward referred to in terms of the approach of the regulator. Um, I wonder perhaps if the panel can um offer some comments about the approach that the regulator has taken to safe systems of work? I mean, I've asked at estimates uh Safe Work about, you know, their enforcement action around psychological hazards, around those kind of approaches. Perhaps the panel might be able to offer some uh commentary around whether they think the regulator is appropriately dealing with that question of safe systems of work that seems to deal with, you know, those questions around how organisations might address the types of hazards that lead to psychological injuries.
My answer's pretty quick on this, and that's, they don't. Not, particularly not for construction. Um, we've, as I mentioned in my opening, we've not seen them at all dealing with psychological claims or how the systems of work on a construction site might increase the risk of psychological claims. I mean, our workers work sixty to seventy hours a week, so work intensification is, is a real issue for them, but I've, nothing from Safe Work.
Um, the situation that I spoke about in the um submission was a, a very distressing situation where a nurse who was visiting a psychiatric patient in his home was murdered um in, in a very brutal manner. He was with a social worker who couldn't find parking, this happened in Belmaine, so obviously parking's very difficult. She had said, I'll try and find a park, or he had said, you find a park, I'll go in. Um, it was only when he didn't turn up and she rang, the psychiatric patient answered the phone and said, this person is deceased. Um, so obviously her mental health would have suffered very detrimentally from that incident. The problem that we have with that is that it was dealt with by the police and that's to be expected. However, Safe Work did not attend that. So the process or the, the safety of the workers who still go out and do that work hasn't changed, nothing has changed. Um, the police obviously have done what they had to do, that person is locked away. Um, but the health department haven't changed their um safety measures, they haven't done anything to make those nurses who still go out there and visit psychiatric patients any safer. And that's the problem that we have, that's the job of the regulator. The regulator certainly is not the police, the police have a place, but they have a place beside the police looking at the systems that broke down, what went wrong, why did this happen, how can we prevent this from happening again? They argued it was a police matter and that they couldn't go into a residential address.
Um, can I just add that I, from some of the interactions that I've had, it's very difficult to get them into the workplaces. Um, we've had a situation where we um, in a correctional centre where we had a female officer that was nearly sexually assaulted by an inmate, um, and it was up to, and the department never got them in to have a look at the mechanisms and to check all the balances to see if everything was done properly, to look at how we can fix the systems in that, in that centre. It was us, the P S A, that had to push to get them in, but then when we got them in, there's so many barriers to actually make change, to make sure that that never happens again. Um, so, and then we've had another situation in another centre where an officer brought them in because of bullying and harassment, and then it turned out that they were more onside of the department than what the, what they were for the individual. So a lot of our members don't have faith in Safe Work. You know, looking after their, looking after their, um, you know, safety in the workplace.
I think Mr Mansfield had a contribution as well.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Ted. Um, I'll, I'll observe this from recent times and work back to the code of practice. Um, Safe Work New South Wales have amended, updated their mental health page in recent weeks, I'm assuming it's recent weeks. As a H S R trainee, I was looking at the material and they've published uh twelve tip sheets and some material that is providing overarching information in addition to the code of practice. But I recall and have no record of any attempt to consult with the tripartite members, government, employers and unions in a collaborative manner to consider those tip sheets. I, I have used them, highlighted them to people, I have not had the time to actually read those tip sheets to see if they actually supplement the code of practice significantly, and they may be fine work, but they've emerged from nowhere. I will observe that I am glad that the two fact sheets that they first produced soon after the code of practice have taken a bit of a backseat because those two fact sheets dealt with only a minor issue, minor issues about, one was a fact sheet that was a list of forty or fifty other contact, other organisations you could contact instead of Safe Work New South Wales. And the other one was about reasonably necessary, sorry, reasonable actions of employers, but there was no other information. I'm not even aware if those fact sheets are still published. The code of practice itself, um, I think actually is a pretty good outcome in the, in the end. You know, we might as unions have wanted more, but I think it's a pretty sound document. It um is, it was produced for a collaboration and I think the little bit of work I have done with workers and health and safety reps since it's been published, um, has largely been around the lists of, the non-definitive list of psychosocial hazards, it's, that's on page seven and eight of that, but it's a useful beginning point in working with H S Rs in work, and workers and organisers and others working for unions to think about what, what is the breadth of psychosocial hazards and risks for workers and, and the scenarios with that. It's early days, I am concerned also that it's reported that Safe Work New South Wales has a three-part triage process for dealing with psychosocial mental health reports, but I am not aware of that being published anywhere, uh, whether it was published to, let's call it, industry players, the social partners, the tripartite members. Um, so I have some concern about whether that might be a filtering, a filtering process.
Could I just, sorry, could I just ask, Mr Mansfield, in that case, um, where, where has that information come from? If it's, if it's not published anywhere, if it's not, um, if it's not detailed anywhere, where, that sounds to me a bit like scuttlebutt.
Uh, it was reported antidoteally at uh Unions New South Wales Workers' Comp and Work Health and Safety Officers' meeting in the last, in the last four or five weeks.
Okay, did they provide any uh evidence or um advice around uh that?
Well, we're wa, uh, we're waiting for more information, we are, we are, we are waiting for further information on that.
Do you, do you mind if I ask who raised it? I'm just curious as to, um, we often hear these stories of, we heard this, we've heard that, and then um obviously uh they inevitably, well, not inevitably, that they don't um actually eventuate. So I'm just curious as to how much validity we can put on, you know, information such as this, where, and where we could actually find some uh opportunity to actually validate it.
Uh, I acknowledge that is, it is my intention along with normal workload, et cetera, to, to circle back to that matter with Safe Work New South Wales.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, um, uh, Miss Hayward, in your introductory remarks, you mentioned the mentally healthy workplaces uh strategy. It strikes me that that's uh barely touched the service that actually, its implementation has been pretty sketchy. Um, I'm interested perhaps in the lessons that we can draw from the experience in the construction industry, and perhaps Mr Acken, you might be able to talk us through uh the kind of work that you're doing, your organisation is doing in terms of addressing that, uh, 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 trying to deal with the preventative side of uh creating workplaces that are, you know, uh mentally healthy and, and uh safe from psychosocial hazards.
So uh, thank you for the question, the foundo blue is about construction companies building capacity to manage someone who may be experiencing deteriorating, deteriorating mental health. So there's a, there's a starting point that we have to, we have to establish as a baseline for employees across the whole site. So we used what we knew from working within the industry of drug and alcohol for twenty years with the construction industry and the relationships that we have with other organisations uh in other states. We recognised that we needed to reduce the amount of numbers of people who were getting general awareness training onsite and everybody needed to get it. It needn't go more than forty-five minutes, but those class sizes need to be small enough so that we had two counsellors within the class that are able to engage with people and engage with that particular class. So from there, from those particular training sessions, general, mental health, general awareness, training, you're able to recruit people who have an interest within mental health. Now, there's risk assessments that have to be done because people have either had a family member that might have suicide, or, or, or they may have themselves, so there's a risk assessment that needs to be done. But they're the people who are passionate about mental health. We also have touchpoints onsite who are, who are delegates or H S Rs and they, and those passionate people go through uh a one-day workshop where we talk about the nature of trauma, collaborating with people, vulnerability, being courageous and vulnerable. They're not, they're two words that aren't used very often within the construction industry. But in order for us to engage with a male-dominated workplace, we need to introduce these concepts and we need to be able to, an are you okay day is a great day to be able to do it. And being able to talk to eight hundred men this morning about believing in their intuition when a work colleague isn't behaving in a manner that is normal to them and being able to approach them. But then there's the fear of what do I do if someone says, I am, I am struggling, what do I do? So this is where our organisation comes in, because we'll be able to provide professional support. Now, we can either go out onsite or they can bring us to, bring that person to Foundation House. We've been fortunate enough to get officers in Pitt Street. So, so there are a number of um places where people can come and they can get immediate face-to-face counselling. That's a little bit like going to the G P, you turn up to the G P, um, you don't get in straight away, so we make them welcome. But there's a, what's really important about all of this is engagement. Engagement with a workforce which hasn't got a high level of health literacy. It's the reality for construction. And so we, we need to engage these employees, these workers, and we need to make them feel safe. And we do that by authenticity, being genuine. Now, we do that by being out onsite, by doing toolbox talks, by being at delegates' meetings, by being out, we've been out at multiplex, out at the airport for four days at seven A M at startup meetings. Um, there was an incident that was referred to, the, one of the employees um out there had died by suicide. Um, a major subcontractor. Yet it's not the subcontractor that's contacting us, it's the principal builders where those subcontractors are working. So I, as, I'm not a big organisation, but I have to send people to three different locations to do critical incident training and workshops with the group of people because it didn't come from the employer itself. So the principal builder, multiplex, Roberts Co, C P B have all contacted us to get people out for a particular group of people because they're, an employer of this subcontractor had died by suicide. There's education on the side of construction workers, but just as much there is on the side of the employer. The employer needs educating. It was suggested to me that instead of having foundo blue onsite, that one principal builder should have a chaplain, if they'd prefer to have a chaplain. Now, I'm not saying that it's, it's um, it's not a good, a good idea to have a chaplain, but we need mental health professionals out there, that's what we need. And does a chaplain necessarily uh cover all denominations? These, this is where the regulator comes in, that we need a regulator with teeth, because if the employer can get away with not introducing something of value, build capacity, then they, they're not going to do it. Forty-four cents a day foundo blue costs per employee, forty-four cents a day. And I have been trying to get employers across all major sites to sign up for this, and I've only had one. And I've been at it since two thousand and twenty. In the interim, I've trained two hundred and five delegates and H S R out of the C F M E U and people who are interested in the E T U or the P S A or H S U. And from that two hundred and five people that we've trained, we've had over two thousand eight hundred face-to-face counselling sessions. I, I don't need to tell you there's a need for this, I can only speak for construction. The relationships, the six days, men want to take their kids to soccer, that's what brings value to their life, not working every Saturday. They want to participate in this, and because they can't, they have the cognitive dissonance of, do I go to work or do I stay at home and take the kids to, all of a sudden I, 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 I start developing relationship problems. And then I have divorce problems, and then I have custody problems. We need to do more, we need to build capacity and we- we understand that we're, for construction, we're coming from a long way back.
Thank you. Can I just ask, yeah, Mr. Akon, what's the view in terms of the regions and in, and your work at the moment? I understand you, what you've just explained in terms of, you know, the capacity to uptake, and that, you know, you've been going for two years. What's your view in terms of the regions?
No different to what it is for the view of metropolitan Sydney is, there's a necessity for organisations to build capacity to be able to engage with counselling, social workers, psychotherapists, psychologists.
Sorry, I was talking more in terms of reach and, and what you're doing in your organisation.
So if I get a call from lend lease and tweet heads, then because of the, there's, there's some, there's some workers that are showing signs of distress because they've been involved with a cleanup for the floods, I send counsellors, I fly counsellors up. I don't get any government funding, you know? But I, I fly counsellors up, stay two days to hang around site, to do some, to do some education, training groups, and to see what, what comes from there. We've sent counsellors up twice to tweet heads. And we'll meet the demand. We will, we will, we will not leave those workers without anybody to talk to. We won't do that. We've, we say they got, we've got their back, we mean we've, we've got their back. But I haven't got a, all I've got is 40 grand from Bilt. That's it. But I'm out at Multiplex, and I'm out at CPB, and I'm out at Roberts Co., and we do this because these are human beings, and they deserve it. And we, we have, we have counsellors, we have social workers, we have psychologists and psychotherapists, so we can, but we're stretched. We're really stretched. But we meet the demand because we say we're going to meet the demand.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, through chair. Thank you all for coming along, and thanks to your organisations for making very helpful and valuable submissions, but also for the work you do for, on behalf of, obviously, your members, but workers across New South Wales. Because obviously, the work done through the union movement and led by Union New South Wales raises the standards for workers in this state, not just those in unions. Can I commence by just making, just a quick observation, as we were having an exchange of questions earlier, that, in particular with respect to the construction industry, that just note that on the 21st of April 1856, people would be aware, or some people in this room would be aware, that stonemasons in Melbourne downed tills in regards to the commencement of the ADR Day Campaign, which in fact was achieved directly resulting from that particular downing of tills in April 1856. And if you assume that people worked, or the builders or stonemasons worked then back in 1856 after the campaign, four and a half day, five and a half days, in other words, Monday, Friday, Saturday morning, that'd be a 44-hour week. And if they worked six full days, it'd be a 48-hour week. And I have to say, I was just surprised by Ms. Hayward's evidence earlier. So this is 1856. The quoting that some of the members of her organisation are working between 60 and 70 hours a week in 2022. So it is pretty amazing when you sort of think about that. We're talking about work intensification, and Mr. Skinner spoke about that very, very well earlier, that here we are in 2022, thinking we're a whole lot better in so many respects. But if you think of the hours of work, it can be quite extraordinary. On the matter of work intensification, can I just throw this one in for some discussion, and obviously any of the panel would be most welcome? And it's a little bit specific, but I wanted to raise it anyway, because I think I'm very keen on your, your thoughts, that with respect to the, what is now embedded and ongoing use of computer and information technology, and we're certainly not going to be going backwards in terms of the, what's currently available, but obviously the expanded use in areas that we can't even imagine with respect to computers and information technology, by employers to drive productivity, as, as employers define productivity. And I'm thinking particularly with respect to the, the use of, of algorithms that are presently used these days quite, quite commonly by employers with respect to setting of, of work programmes and work, work schedules. But looking forward to artificial intelligence whereby artificial intelligence will be used to help map out what will be work done by, by workers, I'm just wondering if, if you'd care to share your thoughts about, if we just look at what's unfolding before us, that the whole intensification process just seems to be almost accelerating, that we really are pushing against something which is coming at us at what is a broader and an increasing rate. Perhaps leave it for questions or comments.
I mean, our intensification is really based on lack of treaties, to be honest, and deadlines. You've got whether creates unworkable deadlines for builders to complete their projects, or face financial penalties, and who's the person that's going to be doing the work to meet that deadline. That's why they work the hours they work.
I would say from a very large cross-section of membership, it is, they are doing more with less, and that's due to reforms, you know, over the years. We've had significant reduction in staffing in corrections. We've had significant, you know, reduction in staffing all across all of our different agencies. You know, we've also got insecure work in our schools, in our school system. You know, we've got people under due rest because they don't know if they've got jobs, you know, the following year. You know, there's, there's a lot of factors that go into, you know, the, the intense work that people have to do. There is definitely an increase because they're doing, they're doing more with less.
I mean, it's sometimes referred to as a bit of a hackneyed phrase, you know, or trite to say, to do more with less, but, but that in fact is a reality, isn't it?
It, it most definitely is. I mean, when I started in the job 34 years ago as a prison officer, we had far more staff. We've increased our population of inmates, but we've reduced our staffing capabilities. You know, you have a look at Service New South Wales, they would probably say the same thing, that, you know, going back 10, 15 years, they had more staff, they're doing more work with less staff now. So I think that's across the board in most government agencies.
Can I just make a comment briefly? Of course, it's got to be shared. Ms. Flores, thank you for your tenet stain and the Unions New South Wales submission. I note on the top of your second page of your submission, Unions New South Wales submission, the paragraph that commences "other hazards include", and there's quite a list of matters. It really is quite a confluence of factors, isn't it, contributing to this?
Absolutely, yes.
And I presume, without putting words in your mouth, that that's, wouldn't be a completely exhaustive list.
It is not.
But, but, but ones that obviously from affiliates have been reported to you at various meetings and forums, you know, letting you know from their particular industry point of view, some of the factors that are contributing to this.
So I personally began my career as a teacher back in the early 90s, and pretty quickly into my career, I realised that if I wanted to have a life, if I wanted to actually sleep, that it would probably be a good idea to find a different career. And I did that. I went and studied again and got out of teaching. My partner is still a teacher, and I will say the workloads are horrific, never-ending, impossible to ever meet the deadline. If you think about it, if you have a class anywhere from 26 to 30 students, and you do five activities a day, those activities need to be marked. That's five times 30, textbooks, essays, whatever it is that you've done with those students. Then factor in all the meetings you have to do, the requirements that you need to keep up with to keep your accreditation relevant and, and up to date. It's impossible. It's, it's literally impossible. And I saw as a young teacher, back when things were nothing like they are today, that other friends of mine who I'd graduated with, and I did an arts degree, so we all went off and did different things, were having a life, they were getting married, they were meeting their partners, they were enjoying themselves on the weekend. I was just working constantly around the clock. So personally, I thought, I can't sustain this for my life. This is not sustainable. I then went and worked in the Clothing Trades Union and worked without workers, then found myself in a union, the Independent Education Union, working with teachers in non-government schools. One of my members had come, had done the reverse. She'd been a lawyer, corporate lawyer, and had decided to change her career to teaching. She actually said to me that she worked more as a teacher than she did at a corporate lawyer, but earned half the amount. And she was baffled, she loved teaching, she loved the students, but she was baffled as to why teaching was rated so lowly as a profession, and why, in the world of corporate law, and she'd worked in government as a lawyer, why the, the standards were so different. She had to buy her own resources, she had to spend, you know, most of her weekends were spent marking, she spent hours and hours before and after school, because it's one of the few jobs where you actually have to go to work for a few hours before you start work to prepare for work, and then you work teaching from three, nine till three, and then you finish that and you prepare again for the next day.
Chair, I'm just going to take the point of order, that as interesting as I find this.
Look, I'm just trying to give you a bit of a picture of workload.
While I appreciate, I'm just taking a point of order if you don't mind. Whilst I find the line of inquiry interesting, it really isn't related to the terms of reference of the inquiry, so I'd ask.
Well, this is, teachers, we have a shortage of teachers.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking.
Excuse me. I don't know who you think you are. You're not the chair.
Neither are you. I'm speaking. I won't be spoken over by a witness.
Listen, muster, there's no way to, there's no way to treat a witness.
You're not the chair today.
It is no way to treat a witness.
Mr. Donnelly, Mr. Fang.
I'll take the point of order.
I'll, I'll order, please. If we, I'll hear the point of order, and then we'll go back to the witness, Mr. Fang.
The point of order is, is that we need to be responsive to the terms of reference, the contribution that is being made about the requirement for members to be at work a little bit earlier or not, and not related to the terms of reference, which is the worker's compensation scheme. We need to come back to the point of order.
The point of order, the witness is indirectly responding to a question about work intensification. She's giving relevant evidence in response to a question that was directed to her by Mr. Donnelly around work intensification. It's perfectly within the ground, the, the terms of reference of this inquiry, and I think the witness should be allowed to proceed.
I'll ask the witness to proceed and ensure that the comments are in lines with the, with the terms of reference.
I would just say that in my experience, working in a union, supporting these teachers, workers' compensation, psychological claims increased dramatically, and workload was directly relevant to that.
Just quickly, and finally, my last couple of questions. Now, thank you for that answer, which was directly relevant, directly relevant to the question posed to you, and noting that you are the convener of what is monthly meetings by Unions New South Wales of all affiliates of Unions New South Wales dealing with occupational health and safety. You bring a wide experience and knowledge to this inquiry, and we're very grateful for your attendance. Can I take you to page seven of Unions New South Wales' inquiry, and I'm sure you've got page seven either pretty close to where you're sitting. Page seven, just the second paragraph from the top that commences, "Unions New South Wales is aware of many complaints that have gone unchecked." But can I quickly move over to the next page, because I'll ask you to answer both questions concurrently in light of the time. The next page, the second paragraph from the top, "Increasing workers are becoming aware of Safe Work's failure to enforce the Work Health and Safety Act 2012." I'm wondering, and given that we are moving towards the end of this session, and if you need to take something of this on notice, welcome to do so, but I would like some preliminary comments in regards to the points you're making in both of those two paragraphs, Ms. Flores.
Briefly, we were assisting the Meatworkers' Union in one particular instance last year when the workers brought to their union's attention safety issues that were of concern to them, partly in relation to COVID, and also in relation to the speeding up of machinery in the abattoir, which they were concerned caused them to have to stand very close to each other. And this is a bit graphic, but they had to slaughter animals very quickly because the conveyor belt which these animals were on had been sped up.
The chain, yeah.
It was a very distressing situation. The Meatworkers' Union tried to go into that workplace and were not allowed to enter. They went to Safe Work to ask for assistance, and Safe Work didn't provide assistance. We had numerous meetings with Safe Work, ourselves, the Meatworkers' Union, and they were simply telling the Meatworkers' Union that they would have to go to the Industrial Relations Commission to enforce their right of entry. Safe Work themselves wouldn't go into the, into the Meatworkers', oh, sorry, the abattoir in question. What they did say was that they would do inspections of all abattoirs. The Meatworkers' Union said, "We don't need you to do that because we have faith that all the other abattoirs are safe, and we have easy access into those abattoirs." So we didn't actually ever resolve that. One worker who had made the complaint was dismissed, and the union then had to focus on that particular instance, incident, and, and obviously go down the path of the Fair Work Commission to try to restate that, that person. So to this day, we still don't know what's going on, and what, and whether the concerns were fixed. One of the concerns was so simple, it was basically toilet, the toilets in, the female toilets didn't have any attachment to the wall to put the toilet rolls on, and so the toilet rolls were placed on the sanitary napkin bins, which are, I'm sorry, this is a bit graphic again, but they're often overflowing and not particularly hygienic. So that, again, we don't know, it was a very simple fix, I would imagine, and a cheap fix, but we don't know if it was fixed. And that caused great anxiety for the workers.
Thank you for your insightful and detailed evidence.
I've got one final question, unless any other members. Yep, you go first, Mr. David.
I just want to ask, Ms. Jess, we, a number of the individual submissions were from correctional offices. And I suppose, you know, we know that, that there's a disproportionately high number of psychological claims within the TMF, public sector workers. It struck me that there's clearly something going wrong in the way corrective services are dealing with psychological claims, and I wondered whether you might be able to offer us some comments in response to that.
I think, I'm not sure whether everyone would be aware of what happened with regards to staff at MRRC that put in psychological claims, that was a massive payout that happened from that. There is just, what I, what I'm finding with corrective services is that there is definitely an increase in psychological claims, and that's due to various different factors, whether it's the incidences that we have to deal with, which is, you know, deaths in custody, it's assaults, assaults are on the increase. You know, we're seeing inmate self-harm on a regular basis. We're seeing stuff that most individuals would not see on a daily basis. But what we're not getting is the backup from the department in regards to how we are managed. We don't have proper training in regards to resilience. We don't have proper, you, you know, we don't, the managers aren't trained to give proper debriefs. And most of the time after critical incidents, it's the debriefs that will actually assist people and can stop people from having prolonged, you know, PTSD, or, or, you know, psychological injury. Those things aren't happening in our workplaces to any, to a level of acceptance at all. We, we don't have the support mechanisms in our injury management. You know, if, you really need to have, I believe, proper trained injury management staff that actually can deal with psychological injuries, because what we're finding is, we're having a lot of people, it, it's exacerbated and it's increased in the work. Like, it's, when they're off on PTSD, the treatment that they're getting from either the insurer or the injury management. or the injury management person is not acceptable. And, you know, they're not having enough contact, we have too many, because of their workload as well, they just can't contact anyone, they can't have that personal relationship with the person to try and improve them, try to get them back to work. We have problems getting people back to work, you know, where they can, other areas for them to work at. We have problems with people getting retrained. It's just a whole systematic failure that's happening.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Skinner, I might address this to you, and I know this to the other members, this is unique to policing, but there may be some flow-on from that. Look, page seventy of your submission is the graph in terms of claims. It's not disputed that claims are out of control in terms of the increase in number. But I want to put this to you. Policing has always been a stressful and traumatic occupation. That is without dispute. There's always been traumatic incidents, Granville train disaster, Luna Park, Millpera massacre, North Coast bus crashes, et cetera, et cetera. My concern is why are we seeing an increase in claims now? Police have always seen bad things and always had to deal with bad people. And that's, again, that's just nature of the job. I've seen this increase over the last couple of years and I'm asking myself why? And you know my background, of course, and the fact that I've been heavily involved in it. Is there an obligation, do you think, upon the employer, and this is where it might stem to other industries, of resilience training? Now, Ms. Jess, and in fact, Ms. Hayward in her opening statement talked about prevention. Mr. Manfield brought up the objectives of the act, including prevention of injuries. Jess just talked about a debrief after incidence. Well, let's forget about after incidence. Should there be an obligation on the employer in terms of resilience training before incidents even happen? Particularly unique to police force, you're never going to be able to provide a safe workplace in terms of traumatic and stressful incidents. They're going to see things. Now, you can provide a safe workplace in terms of providing equipment, et cetera, but what you are going to see and be subjected to, you can't stop. And let's touch upon the Buxton car crash the other night. You can't prevent officers, whether they be ambulance or fireys or police, from going to those scenes. Do the employers need to build resilience into their employees?
So there's a number of concepts that have been raised in that question. Firstly, will police inherently see traumatic things? Yes. Will police inherently be harmed and suffer injury from that? That concept must be unacceptable. It cannot be acceptable that because police will deal with traumatic content, they will inevitably injured. That, anyone who thinks that needs to stop thinking that now. As I said earlier, it is, in most cases, in most psychological injuries, it is not the traumatic content that is the primary contributor to the injury, it is the workplace conditions that they face in interacting with their experience of trauma. So I can't stress strongly enough that, yes, police will inherently deal with difficult and traumatic content. They will face violence, they will be unsafe physically, and they'll experience stress from the danger that they put themselves in. But that does not mean that they should be and will always be harmed. And if we, if the New South Wales Police Force manages psychosocial risks correctly, they will be able to go to those incidents that are inherently traumatic, but continue to work as police officers and not be psychologically injured and stay mentally healthy. The second part of the question was in regards to resilience training for police officers. I would be perfectly happy, in fact thrilled, if police officers had greater access to resilience training and to the extent that they want to use the learnings from that to make themselves more healthy. I hope that they do and I hope that it works and that they get to lead healthy, happy lives. Whether that should be a core pillar of the New South Wales Police Force's response to psychosocial safety, I again cannot stress strongly enough. The answer is no. Because that is an obligation on the worker to keep themselves healthy in a workplace that is inherently damaging, and that, again, is not acceptable. So I would like police officers to be able to receive resilience training, but the fundamental core response that the New South Wales Police Force employs to keep its officers safe must be that the police force controls risks, they don't seek to upskill their workers to keep themselves healthy, and that the obligation falls on police officers to stay healthy. They should train and upskill their managers, anyone with responsibility for supervising police officers should be expert in managing police workplaces and dealing with psychosocial safety risks. So if that training is delivered, if the business-as-usual day-to-day tasks of managers, supervisors throughout the police force is to keep their workers healthy and safe, and they have the ability and the expectations to achieve that, if that is achieved, then yes, I would be thrilled if police officers received resilience training. But there are a number of things that have to be a much higher priority, and that is for the police force to implement, not to sit on the obligation of workers to look after themselves.
That's all I have, Chair. Thanks. Thank you. Unfortunately, we have run out of time, but I'd like to thank all of you for attending this hearing. Committee members may have additional questions for you after the hearing. The committee has resolved that the answers to these, along with any answers to questions taken on notice, be returned within twenty-one days. And the secretariat will contact you in relation to these questions. Thank you for your attendance today. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
From my left, could each witness please state their name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
My name is Matthew Buxton, Operations Manager at the Workers' Health Centre. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Peter Remfrey, I'm the CEO of the Workers' Health Centre. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Karen Castledine, I am the President of ARPA New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Hello, my name's Nathan Clark, I'm the ARPA National CEO. I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Good afternoon, my name's Bill Party and I'm an employee of Rehab Options Injury Management. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Hi, my name is Steve Stevens, I'm the Managing Director of Rehab Options Injury Management. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Right, thank you, thank you all for attending today. Would you like to start by making a short statement? And if I could ask each of you making a short statement to keep it to no more than a couple of minutes each?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the committee for giving the Workers' Health Centre the opportunity to make a submission today. I'll take it that the submission has been read, but I will call out some highlights from that submission. There's four issues that we raised in our submission, early intervention, legal rights, return to work coordinator training and work capacity issues, or the work capacity process, I should say. Early intervention in our view, be it for psychological or for physical injuries, is arguably the most important issue to assist workers to recover as quickly as possible and to facilitate a safe and durable return to work. These processes in our view can be done concurrently and in most cases should be. And to recover at work is, in our view, the optimal strategy. Arguably, the most important issue with return to work in respect to site claims is to have early intervention to reduce workplace conflict and to minimise the incidence of some employers using the system as a de facto discipline system to exit employers rather than use the proper disciplinary processes, which we see too often, particularly in large employers and especially in the public sector. And I know my colleague Angus Skinner here earlier talking about police. It's evident to us in corrections, health, education, in our experience that these things have occurred. So early intervention involving rehab providers who can provide assistance to all of the parties to focus on the main aim of the scheme, and that is to get someone to recover and to return them to a safe and durable workplace, is critically important in our view. And it's something that in many respects is being missed at the moment, and there's a reluctance to involve workplace rehab at an early stage in the process, and I think that's an error. And I think that the evidence is that when we do have professional, independent, worker-focused rehabilitation, assisting people to get back to work, but also liaising with the nominated treating doctor, the employer and the insurer and the other stakeholders within the system, but advocating on behalf of the injured worker, knowing that the most financially advantageous outcome for that injured worker is to get them back into the workplace as quickly as possible in a safe and durable way, is going to provide the best possible outcomes. And encouraging everyone from the get-go to think about getting someone back into work, whatever that looks like. And the impediments to that all too often are a failure to provide suitable duties, a failure to, and in the large employers, in the public sector in particular, a failure to allow someone to transfer to another area where the exposure to that psychological danger, and particularly but not necessarily or exclusively aspects relating to workplace conflict, bullying and harassment, et cetera. There seems to be a reluctance in many respects to provide suitable duties and to allow people to shift to another environment where they can thrive in a safe, in a safe way. The second issue that we raised today is in respect to individuals' legal rights pursuant to the scheme. A right that is unknown is no right at all. And the scheme provides injured workers to, and I think most people would understand this, to nominate their own treating doctor, for example. Some employers try to get people to go to a doctor of the company's choice, and most people, I think, now understand that that's not something that they have to do. Not always the case in respect to workplace rehabilitation providers, however. The scheme does not discriminate between workplace rehab and other providers. Yet all too often, people are allocated to a workplace rehab provider by the employer or the insurer without being told that they have a legal right to nominate their own. It's critically important in our view for an injured worker to have some confidence in the person that's advocating on their behalf or the company. But inevitably, it's an individual that is helping a worker and certainly, I think, from our perspective, and I only speak for my own organisation, we try to have some continuity with the individual allied health professional that's assisting that person get back to work, that there is a rapport and they understand they're acting in their own, in their best interests. And unless someone is provided with information around their capacity to be able to nominate the injury management provider of their choice, there are perceived, I'll put it now higher, conflicts of interest in that situation. And ultimately, and all too often from our perspective, we pick up a referral where it hasn't worked, the relationship has broken down, and the individual goes to their union and the union says, well, you have a choice. First time they've been told that, and in our view, and then we pick them up and try and fix the problems that have been created by that relationship. So at the outset, I would think that there certainly should be a requirement under the act for the nominal insurer or the insurer that they're allocated to under the claim to advise people that they have that legal right. The other two issues relate to return to work coordinator training in those companies that have their own internal return to work coordinators. And again, in large government agencies, that's typically what happens. We're not satisfied that the return to work coordinator training is sufficient, the online training scheme is suboptimal, and we would request that there be a review made of that scheme. And the last issue relates to the work capacity assessment process. It's been a problem that we've identified for some time, that the use of vocational assessments aimed at identifying vocational options are being used for work capacity decisions. They ought not be, they're being produced for a different reason, and it's not appropriate in our view, and it's leading to opportunities for employers to go down the path of a work capacity assessment using the wrong information, creating problems for return to work outcomes. All of those are contributing in our view to worsening claims experiences, particularly in psychological injuries, which is the basis of the of the inquiry today, but also on the physical side. So thanks for that opportunity and we're happy to take questions.
Thank you. My name is Nathan Clark, as I said before, National CEO of the Australian Rehabilitation Providers Association. And along with Karen Castledine, ARPA New South Wales President, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the New South Wales Law and Justice Committee for inviting us both here today. ARPA New South Wales is the industry voice for the workplace rehabilitation industry, representing approximately seventy percent of all CERA-approved rehabilitation providers. Our sixty-plus New South Wales member organisations currently employ over one thousand individuals who work as workplace rehabilitation consultants, which we estimate covers nearly ninety percent of the entire New South Wales industry. ARPA, its members and the workplace rehabilitation consultants that they employ work within a variety of service delivery systems in order to achieve the best possible outcomes for their clients, including those who may be suffering from a mental health illness or episode in the workplace. As you would have noted in our submission, ARPA has been very pleased with the release of the 2021 publication commissioned by CERA to investigate the impact of receiving workplace rehabilitation services on return to work outcomes, which showed that in New South Wales, one, the timely appointment of a workplace rehabilitation provider can improve return to work rates by up to five percent for physical injuries and a staggering twenty percent for psychological injuries. Number two, appointing a workplace rehabilitation provider early in the claims process can result in total claims cost savings of up to nine percent. Taking into account this groundbreaking research, ARPA is pleased to advise that although there has been an increase in referrals to workplace rehabilitation in the New South Wales scheme over the last couple of years, Wales scheme over the last couple of years and the level of consultation and collaboration between all stakeholders has significantly increased, the speed at which the change is being made within the scheme to see earlier referral to a workplace rehabilitation provider has not been fast enough and that there should be mandatory referral to workplace rehabilitation for workers not anticipated to return to work within four weeks. Furthermore, taking into account the CIRA research that stated that the timely appointment of a provider can improve return to work rates for psychological injuries by 20%, all mental health claims should be referred to workplace rehabilitation services as soon as practicable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee Chair, Honourable Members, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. My name again is Bill Party, I'm employed by Rehab Options Injury Management. Our organisation offers a range of services to employers and their employees, including predominantly injury management and return to work coordination. Our organisation is also represented today by our Principal, Mr Steve Stevens, my boss. Collectively as an organisation, our senior staff have a combined total of in excess of 100 years of experience in managing claims in the New South Wales Workers Compensation Scheme. My boss has been running the business for 34 years. But I'm a relative newcomer, having joined the organisation in January this year. My previous background in workers' compensation matters involves having spent over 20 years as a solicitor engaged in representing insurers and employers, defending workers' compensation claims. I've been asked this introduction to highlight a few key ideas, themes or messages, so these are the things that I wanted to put to you briefly. The legislation must be allowed to do its work. There is no point having a section which allows employers to raise a defence to psychological injury claims under Section 11A of the Workers Compensation Act 987 if there is neither the will nor the desire on the part of those who manage the scheme to enable such defences to be properly prepared, raised and maintained. The second point, injured workers should be supported from the outset of all claims. But at the same time, claims should be properly investigated as to whether they are indeed compensable. The third point, as part of the support for workers, proper treatment must be prioritised and that means identifying the specific psychological condition or conditions that the worker suffers from, so that the treatment can be most effective. Fourthly, as a lawyer, I concede certainly, in my experience, engaging in litigation is usually one of the worst available options to resolve any kind of dispute, let alone a psychological injury claim. Litigation in these claims is often difficult, time-consuming and expensive. However, sometimes opposing views of what's gone on are so hard to reconcile that there's little alternative but to engage in a contest between those views. If the scheme were in a position to provide more flexible dispute resolution opportunities by way of compromise settlements between the parties, especially in relation to psychological injury claims, then the benefits for all scheme stakeholders would be significant, in my view. I look forward to contributing further to the committee's deliberations today, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for those opening statements. I'll kick off with a few questions and then I'll hand over to my colleagues. I'll probably just start with you, Mr Clark. So I found your submission very interesting and in particular the fact that the government could be saving up to $330 million a year from within the New South Wales Workers Compensation Scheme, a scheme that costs us about $3.7 billion a year, if there is an appointment of a workplace rehabilitation provider early on in the process, so I think you've said that within the first eight weeks. How, at the moment, how long does it take for a workplace rehabilitation provider to be appointed? What's sort of the average time?
We don't have obviously up-to-date statistics on that, we don't know that, but the last one we've heard, and you'd have to confirm this with ICARE and/or CIRA, we believe it's in the hundreds of days.
Hundreds of days, okay. And I think similar to your evidence as well, Mr Party, that you have said, one of your recommendations is that injuries should be properly identified or diagnosed before or very shortly after a claim is made. So that's sort of similar evidence that it's more the speed in which injured workers are being properly diagnosed or assessed. Are you saying that it just takes far too long and that if potentially a, would you agree that potentially if a workplace rehabilitation was provided was earlier in the process, that that would definitely help?
Independent intervention to drive the process would certainly improve the outcome. But one of the key limitations in my experience is actually just access to treatment.
Yes.
That it's all very well for an injured worker to have a referral from their GP, but the question of then finding someone available who is prepared to take on a claim that is a compensation matter is always an issue whether the injury be physical or psychological. And so increasingly, just access to treatment is a threshold question. And all the while, from a legal perspective, the timeframes are running in relation to how claims are dealt with and treated beyond the initial phase.
So I mean, basically, I think you're also saying that the scheme is far too adversarial, that going to court is often the worst option, that an option far too often undertaken or legal action generally. What we've heard from, and I don't disagree at all, but what we've heard from or some of the evidence that we've received is that psychological claims are going up, ICARE's costs are significantly rising. Yet, on the other hand, we, there's evidence about claims being too heavily-handedly denied or the scheme being too adversarial. So it's almost like, I don't know, this is probably a question to everyone and definitely will be a question to ICARE and to CIRA, is that it doesn't really, it almost doesn't stack up. How can it be on one hand that claims are being denied so regularly and the scheme is so adversarial and there's so many delays, but also we've got costs, in particular psychological claims spiralling out of control? It doesn't really make much sense because we're paying a lot more claims and then those costs would go up even more.
I understand your point Chair, I think the way I would characterise what I've said is not that the current position is too adversarial.
Yeah.
That's quite the opposite, isn't it? I think your submission seems to suggest that there should be more.
I think there's a need for initial support, clearly, but there's also a need for the scheme to operate in the way that it's intended from a legislative perspective, which is that there is a defence that exists. The success of those defences when they are run, when the point is taken, is very low currently. So either people should stop running those defences or they should be properly investigated and resourced so that if there is a genuine issue to be raised under the terms of the legislation, then that is properly ventilated and decisions will end up, you have seen the next sheet of my submission, that a snapshot of the cases decided in the PRC ran at about five or six to one in favour of employees when they challenged an insurer's decision to decline a claim relying on that particular section. And the reason for that in my view is not because the scheme is making incorrect decisions or lawyers are giving them poor advice, it is because there is not enough focus on the preparation of evidence required to successfully defend claims, even though there might be a proper basis factually to do so.
Isn't it fair to say that the Commission has effectively ruled that those exemptions should be only used in a very narrow range of circumstances, isn't that, I mean ultimately, that's how jurisdiction evolves, isn't it? The case law develops, the opportunities to prosecute an argument in relation to that section are narrowing and should only be used in very limited circumstances.
I wouldn't agree that they're narrowing, I would say that they are evolving. But the terms of the legislation itself provides for a range of matters where there is no question a worker has suffered an injury, that is not the point. The point is whether the scheme should bear the costs of that injury and the circumstances.
With respect Chair, I think we missed a point here, aren't we? I mean, someone's suffered an injury, we need to make them well as the first instance in the scheme, not whether or not someone's to blame, which is the whole purpose of contingent liability to see if we can get people back to work. And it's been my experience as 38 years representing police officers that whether or not they're ill because of a non-compensable or a compensable injury, they are still not available to do the work that's required. And the scheme was designed specifically to get early treatment and get people back into the workplace, we worry about the liability issues later. And if we focus upfront on liability, then we're just going to exacerbate the injury, whether it's work-related or not work-related.
Yeah. Can I just, so again, my company 34 years and I'm an outsourced engaged return to work coordinator. I was on the first ever work cover course after participating in a pilot to become a return to work coordinator. So 100% agree, what my team does and what we focus on is something's happened, we're not the ones that are going to make the determination on who's at fault or not, but what we need to do is because we're the engaged coordinator for the company that's had the workplace injury and they take their responsibility and duty care seriously, so we're available day one. Soon as an injury occurs, we know about it, we engage with the worker, we do, we find out who their family is, who's available to pick them up at the hospital, whether the family need to get accommodation at the hospital if they've had a serious injury, all that sort of thing, what happens to their tools if they're on a construction site, you know, who's going to look after them, all things to make them feel comfortable and we look after the injury. But then what we do is we do an examination of the facts then and we then work with the workers' compensation insurer to provide them that information, we do an incident report, investigation report, and we provide them with the details of what happened and if it's all cut and dried as it is usually in a physical injury, not always but usually. And then otherwise, if it's a psychological injury, we again say, well, this is what happened and we've spoken with this person, this person and this person initially and for your factual investigation it might be worth you speaking to this person and that person. And then we try to get a real, there's absolutely a real focus on looking after the person to make sure they get all the correct care and nothing's delayed, but then also think about, well, have a look at the big picture, but no way is treatment ever or any suggestion and all of our clients and their workers, they're all treated like first grade footballers. But in the background, what we need is proper prognosis and diagnosis as you would in a physical injury, the same with a psychological, because I can, it's a lot of years I've been doing this and we do a lot of clients national and a lot of experiences I could, if asked, you know, I could explain where things have just gone on, there's been no diagnosis, there's been no affirmative action or otherwise insurers have not looked at the available information or otherwise they've, as in Bill, lucky to have as working with me in his second supplementary submission, was that insurers are running out of time to make decisions because they haven't made affirmative steps at the start, being provided with certain details and then they find themselves timing out. And I've seen so many instances where they'll ring up a firm providing them some advice and they'll say, I have to have this back by this afternoon or tomorrow and some junior person has provided some advice and we've had to go, well, after it's come back, well, I understand, thank you for providing the advice, but did you read the supplementary report, did you read the statement from such and such? And so I think that that doesn't help anybody, you know, the people need to understand, one, they're being looked after, but two, it's reasonable as, you know, that you look at the circumstances and again, provide the correct care. We've got doctors that are giving scattergun approaches, they're doing antidepressants, they're doing this, they're doing this, they're doing that, because they haven't actually worked out exactly what they're treating, are they treating depression, are they treating anxiety? So again, I think that absolutely focus on treating the injury and making them well and supporting them, but I think intelligent decisions need to be made and the prognosis diagnosis like as early as possible.
Are you, to sort it, to everyone really, but the insurance industry, I know is very worried about fraud and exaggerated claims in the system, it costs tens of millions of dollars a year. Is that something that concerns you and do you think it's of particular concern to CIRA and ICARE and the insurers? Do you think that's why some of the requirements are quite onerous?
No, the incidence of fraudulent claims is exceedingly low, that's not a concern, it's not my experience, having sat and looked. So no, what the distinction I'm trying to make and I hope I'm making myself clear is that there's a difference between support for someone's mental health and whatever they're going through and the question of whether that's a compensable injury under the scheme. The legislation exists and should be applied. If the legislation needs amendment, well, that's a matter for Parliament. But at present, in my view, the legislation isn't being applied as written in that, in practical terms, if there are claims which relate to someone's view about how they've been treated in the workplace from their subjective perspective, but the employer has on an objective view acted reasonably, those claims, according to the legislation, should not be compensable.
Mr Donnelly or Mr Downham?
I'm happy to go, yeah, look, I mean, I found, Mr Party, your submission very at odds with the balance of the submissions to this inquiry. You make comments like, doctors are encouraging the medicalisation of emotion and you say that workers' compensation claims should be for injuries, not just stressful life events, as if to suggest that the balance of psychological claims are somehow illegitimate, is the sort of reading that I get from the submission. I mean, earlier today, we heard from a range of individual workers who had gone through the system and I suppose my question is to you about balancing the opportunity to test whether a claim is compensable against the damage that that process does to workers who have a legitimate claim. How do we reconcile those two competing views in your view?
Well, there's a number of issues that I've raised in the supplementary submissions that I hope the committee's received. Can I just ask that question of the Chair, have you?
Yes.
Thank you. So my answer to that question is simply this, that proper treatment as soon as possible to identify what is wrong with the injured worker will then lead to an assessment of whether that injury is compensable. So the first step is support for the worker. I've advocated for, in my submissions quite clearly, the continuation of the provisional liability provisions and I've in fact commented that I strongly disagree with the Business New South Wales submission, that provisional liability should not apply where the employer believes there's an 11a defence. So I'm at odds with them on that issue. I think there is a clear rationale for, as my friend at the end of the table said, support, but not unconditional or unquestioning support on the basis that there are two separate issues. One is what does someone need to get healthy and the second is should the scheme be paying for it?
Can I ask about, you mentioned in your opening statement about compromise settlements, can you just elaborate on for psychological injuries, what you had in
Can you just elaborate on for psychological injuries, what you had in mind in terms of that proposition?
Well, there's probably two or three areas and I, I won't go into them in detail, but, um, there's a submission that's before you from the Bar Association, which talks about the prospect of an eleven percent threshold for claims for permanent injury for psychological injuries. That's the same threshold as applies for physical injuries. Uh, in my submission, you've seen, I, I think there's no justification for a different threshold in twenty twenty two. Um, if eleven percent is a sufficient injury from a physical perspective for permanent impairment compensation to be paid, then that should be paid for a psychological injury. The relevance of that particular submission is that it creates a small, but probably in my view, highly relevant window between eleven percent and fourteen percent, where someone would be entitled to a lump sum settlement for their injury and its effects on them. But without having the ability to sue their employer for work injury damages. At the moment, as you've seen in my submission, it's all or nothing. It's either you get nothing as a worker or you get both a lump sum and the ability to sue your employer. So I'll set that aside. That's one. The second one is the field of commutation. Now, Parliament looked again at the question of commutation a couple of years ago. Uh, I'm not sure why it was backed away from as an idea. But it's a mechanism that has existed historically. Currently, it's highly inaccessible because it's the same threshold as is necessary to make a work injury damages claim anyway. So you might as well maximize your payout by making a damages claim rather than simply making a commutation claim. Um, there's also financial incentives for, um, making, uh, a damages claim as opposed to a commutation application uh, on the legal cost side. Um, so that's another thing that can be looked at. The other aspect is, in my view personally, there's quite often a nexus or indeed overlap between industrial issues and a compensation claim. One person's reasonable performance management action is another's bullying harassment. And one of the ways in which we could resolve those inextricable differences of view about how someone feels they've been treated is to say that you can have an industrial settlement, which also covers your workers' compensation entitlements. And you can have a deed of release which acknowledges that you have suffered an injury in the course of your work. And you may make other allegations in relation to industrial matters. But there is the opportunity, should an employer wish to do so, to say, we don't agree with you. We think we've done the right thing, but we acknowledge that you don't agree with us. But we are nevertheless prepared to make a settlement to you to conclude the matter. And so long as the, um, parties were to agree to that approach. And obviously workers would need appropriate independent advice. But that would be an avenue to resolve both any industrial matters and any compensation matters by virtue of the application of section one fifty one A of the nineteen eighty seven Act, which talks about someone's entitlement to compensation ceasing at the time they have a damages settlement. So they're three of the kinds of areas where I believe, uh, there could be focus in terms of resolving these issues uh, more quickly, uh, certainly more cheaply from the schemes perspective, which is clearly one of the concerns about the current position. And at the end of the day, without putting an injured worker through the trauma of the kinds of processes that are engaged in, in terms of having to justify your extent of your incapacity or disability by virtue of the initial assessment of you when you make a claim. Then a further assessment of you to make a work injury damages claim. Uh, sorry, to make a, a section sixty six lump sum compensation claim. And then any further assessments of you that might be made in the context of a common law damages claim. So there's, um, why would you put yourself through that? Uh, the answer is, in most cases, uh, the advice you're given as to the best result from where you are at the time. That advice might change if there were different options available.
Uh, yeah, for the question.
Yeah, jumping. I, I did have some questions that, uh, but in light of, um, um, the line of questioning that's just taken place, I could put my questions on notice and perhaps invite, if they wish to do so, um, Mr. Remfrey or Mr. Buckston to respond to what's just been put. Not, not to create sort of a contest, but, but at least a critique of the proposition. Um, opportunity now to do that. If you prefer not to and, and perhaps respond in more detail on notice, that's fine. And I can revert back to my question. So I'll leave it up to you. How do you like to handle it?
Thanks, Mr. Donnelly. Uh, look, we've been focused in our submissions, you probably noticed, largely not on the compens- compensation side of the, the coin, but on the role of the rehab providers and getting people back to work as the preferred option. So, uh, the legal issues that, um, our colleagues at the end of the table have been raising is not something we've really put our minds to. Uh, I, I prefer, uh, the early intervention consistent with what's been said. Early, um, assistance in terms of, uh, medical treatment, proper diagnosis and trying to get the individual back into the workplace. And we believe that, uh, consistent with our, uh, colleagues here from APA that, um, you know, the early engagement of a rehab provider can assist in that process, rather than getting down the path of litigation, et cetera.
No, well, thank, thank you. And that leads into what was going to be my first question to Mr. Remfrey. And that is, in, in your submission in the second paragraph, um, and specifically the, uh, last sentence in the second paragraph, uh, under the heading early intervention, uh, it says, and I quote, um, in our experience, and obviously this is lengthy experience because the workers' health centre has been open for a very long period of time or operated for a very long period of time and, and both yourselves, uh, at the table here have got extensive experience. But in our experience, there is often, there is too often a reluctance to, uh, to approve the provision of workplace rehabilitation services uh, in the early stages of a claim to assist in the development, uh, of the injury management and return to work plans. And I, I note that with respect to, to Mr. Clark, uh, you made that point as well. So I'm just, uh, wondering, in terms of perhaps an explanation for us about your judgment and views about why there is a, a, a reluctance presently. Um, can I invite you to sort of put the cards on the table? What do you see as the primary cause or causes of the reluctance?
I'm going to ask Mr. Buckton to respond to that. He's had twenty five years' experience as a rehab provider, so he comes with a lot of background.
So I thank you very much for the question. Um, in my, I just maybe inform the conversation by having disclosed that there was a time when I commenced working in the industry, which was in nineteen ninety seven, that the features of prominence at that point in time was that the scheme was adverse. And the first consideration that was made at that point in time was who was at fault. And that was a very genuine problem because what it created was a delay. I disclosed that I used to report to, uh, Mr. Greg McCarthy, that was later the head of the Work Cover Authority. And I further disclosed that I directly reported to Dr. Martin Raftery, um, whom was also the medical director on the Board of Work Cover New South Wales. It was through my understanding and observation, it was through their analysis of the problems in the scheme that subsequently the provisions of the nineteen ninety eight legislation were made. And that the nineteen ninety eight legislation clearly focused on early intervention. Very clearly focused on not disputing who was right and wrong. It was more important to actually assist people in the process of getting better in order that they can get back to work. I regret to inform that in my current observations, those fundamental understandings as enshrined in the legislation appear, in my opinion, to have been departed from fundamentally. It was commonly the case that if there was a problem identified, any problem that was identified, that was a barrier to the recovery or return to work, that it was immediately identified, that was an immediate referral to a workplace rehab provider within a period of four weeks. And that effectively we had an industry of people that drag their sorry bag of bones out of bed in the morning to go and serve the act, to serve the scheme and to be of assistance in people so that when the person had a need, that the need was met. And I found that the departure from those very fundamental principles demonstrated by actions is something that has led largely to the significant cost blowout that we observe. I work with people that have been injured on the point with regards to whether a person would fraudulently make a claim. I cannot countenance any single person having ever said to me, do you know what, Matthew? I actually planned the whole thing. I find no evidence of that. Nobody has ever disclosed those details to me. Not ever. Nobody gets out of bed in the morning and effectively participates in some form of activity or of exposed to a certain set of behaviours that would so severely incapacitate them from not being able to work. No evidence that supports that. I think that the fore- the scheme needs fundamental. We need to go back to the future. We need to go back to prioritising the welfare of people. The welfare of people when they've had injuries. That's what I submit.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Comment on that?
Yeah, sure. Very briefly, we have run out of time, but yeah, very briefly, if you want to make a very quick comment, yeah.
Look, uh, in terms of, um, delay to referral, it has improved. I think, um, some of it is, is structural, um, in, in terms of there's not really a proper triage process to identify those people who are at risk of being off work. Um, the evidence would show that what is happening at four weeks is the best predictor of what's going to be happening in the future. Hence why the, um, early intervention, um, data shows that the best time to impact a return to work is between four and thirteen weeks. Um, and that's, as Nathan advised, it's hundreds of days till referral. So rather than, I guess our focus is on, once the person, uh, the claim has come in, it's at that point that they should be triaged very specifically and looking at those risk factors that will identify them as being a long-term, um, long-term off work. And from twenty days, that return to work prospect starts dropping off. And it, and dramatically after fifty two weeks, someone who's job detached has a six percent chance of getting back to work. So it's about the right intervention early on in the piece.
And they're probably, and, uh, workplace rehab providers, du- due to that delay, often get the hardest cases when the, the, the claims agent don't know what to do with them, in our experience, uh, members' experience, I should say. Um, and whether or not initially those claims agents initially think that they, they can do it all. Um, which, which could have been some, some of the reasons we are speculating here why they don't refer earlier. Uh, they do, they try to do all of that stuff in-house. Um, and then we get the harder, we get the harder ones and that might be very difficult to get them back to work, as Karen said, the stats show. After off, off work for a long period of time, the chances of getting back to work are reduced dramatically.
Yeah, um, if I can, um, so, so again, we talk about with engaged return to work coordinators. So what we do, for example, one of our largest clients is a national cleaning company. And, uh, their return to weights, return to wo- work rates are, are a matter of record. So we could have, um, thirty, uh, under thirty thousand cost of claims for our clients for three years for a company that's got a hundred million in wages, right? That's because straight away, we're engaging with the people, we're providing, we're finding and identifying suitable duties in communications with our clients. But then what happens, again, I a hundred percent agree. If it gets to the stage that, A, um, there could be, uh, uh, issues with the workplace, meaning that there's a breakdown for HRIR where it crosses over with injury management. Um, and then it's not logical to try to keep them in the workplace where they can be in another location for another employer if there's a context, then the rehab providers, you know, grab them on board, get them to do it and otherwise, uh, you know, try to get the insurers to make the correct decisions, but have them in their inexperience in mind, because I've been doing this for thirty four years. In their inexperience, they're not making those hard decisions to either make the right decisions or and or refer soon enough to the point where they get, you know, and we inherit them as well. Clients will ring me up who aren't my clients and they'll have a, a, a matter that's been going on for far too long. And we get it and we're going, what's been going on? You know, what's been going on? And just in relation, sorry, to the earlier point, um, I, I'm at times I do with a hundred and seventy six construction companies and I deal with, uh, concrete pumping companies and I deal with labour hire companies. And I can run off a list of people that have, after we've engaged with them and said, listen, tell me about what has happened. Um, and we've had, um, what used to be called in the old days, compo castles that have been sold because people have received money and then they haven't, haven't done it. So unfortunately, it's, it's rare, but it's certainly in my experience, there's people that have, uh, come up and said, Steve, um, yeah, listen, I didn't do it there. I did it here. Um, what have I got to do? I've got to support my family. I've got to do this. Or, or they've just have been so unhappy with their employer for whatever reason that they're prepared to, to do this or otherwise they're going to lose their job for non-performance or non-compliance or whatever it's going to be or, or, or misconduct. And they're prepared to do and say almost anything to, um, to create a, I had a call yesterday. Said, well, Steve, what, you know, what am I going to do? You, you know, um, he was, the cir- circumstances proved, the gentleman made some admissions and he said, well, what do I do now? You know, what do I do now? I don't know where my, where my next, um, paycheck's going to come from. I don't know this. And I'm saying, well, I, I, I really, I'm happy. I'm going to speak with him later again today and, and provide him some support. But, but it never was a workers' compensation claim, you know? Um, and so I'm, because I'm, I'm dealing right from day one when an injury occurs all the way through to whether the insurer makes a decision, whereas rehab providers, again, excellent, fantastic people. I love working with them. Um, but no one is involved right from the day an injury occurs. I get it on my system. My staff, we go out, we look at the injury, we make sure from an OHNS purpose that, that that injury isn't going to happen again. What can we do to prevent it? We do the safe work method statements to make sure that now it's covered, so that same injury won't occur again. That gives the worker some, um, great feeling, the fact that somehow what's happened to them is going to help someone else not happen to them, right? Uh, you know, but, um, I just feel that, um, that again, um, and once people, they feel relieved if they've kept up this facade. And again, it's all on a cooperative basis, but if they've kept up this facade and then once they say, okay, well, thanks, we're on the right track. And we even say, well, you can, you can a- access this or you can access that. But we, and thank you for finally, you know, working with us and, and, and understanding that, that this was never a, that this was never, this is the wrong forum for this, you know? Um, so again, you've got to sometimes work out what's going on, but compassionately and again, look after them. And we never go, we're not looking, we always look at the injury management side and the compassion there. And often we, um, we wouldn't even suggest to the employers to go down the, um, you know, HRIR and disciplinary protocols, say, all we're going to do, this is going to drive a wedge. Let's just fix this, do that, and then we'll have to put that on hold because otherwise the relationship's not there. But I, I do believe that, you know, from my, uh, experience that, that all of the information that's, uh, in Bill's submission is, is hands-on, face-to-face. From the start to the end of every matter that I've handled over thirty four years. Uh, I myself, again, Mary Hawkins, I used to go and she used to get me in once a month, the previous director of work cover. And we used to talk about, what, Steve, what are you doing in the labour hire industry? What, how are you resolving? How are you keeping the construction industry? How are you keeping your stats so low? Uh, and that's just.
We, we actually, we have completely run out of time, unfortunately, over time. So, but thank you. Um, thank you so much to everyone for, for, for coming today. Um, and, uh, committee members may have additional, um, questions, uh, for you after the hearing. Um, the committee has resolved that the answers to these, along with any answers to questions taken on notice today, be returned within twenty one days. Uh, so the secretariat will contact you in relation to these questions. Thank you. Thanks all for coming. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
So I now welcome our next witnesses. Could each witness, starting from my left, please state their name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
I'm on your left.
Yes, yes, you, sorry.
I'm John Buchanan. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
My name's Sam Harvey. I'm a professor of psychiatry and the executive director of the Black Dog Institute. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
And I'm Brad Parker, the CEO of Mates in Construction, New South Wales, and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God. Thank you.
And Nigel Carpenter, I'm the International Industry Partnerships Manager with Mates in Construction. And I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us today. Would you like to start by making a short statement? And if so, please, if you could keep it to no more than a couple of minutes. Professor Buchanan, did you have an opening statement?
Sure. My name's Professor John Buchanan. I'd like to make a correction on coverage that I got this morning in the media about this matter. I was portrayed as a labour market historian. I'm actually a labour market researcher. My core degree is in history, but I have subsequent degrees in law, economics and industrial relations. So the expertise I bring to bear is as a labour market researcher, I have been, and a group of us at Sydney University have been commissioned to do scoping work for ICARE. We have, the report that I shared with the committee is a first account of our initial findings. So I'd just like to get my status clarified and the status of the research clarified.
Thank you. Professor Harvey, would you, did you have an opening statement at all?
Yeah, thank you. So as I mentioned, I'm the executive director of the Black Dog Institute. Black Dog Institute's a medical research institute based here in New South Wales, focused on investigating mental health and suicide prevention. We have a number of streams of research. The research that I've led there over the last 10 years has been focused on the link between work and mental health. And it's in that capacity that I'm here giving evidence. That programme of research looks to answer three questions. Firstly, understanding how work and workplace factors can be a risk factor or a protective factor for mental health. Secondly, thinking about how we can create more mentally healthy workplaces, developing and testing interventions in the workplace. And then thirdly, thinking about how when a worker suffers from mental health, be it a psychological injury or otherwise, how we can improve their treatment and recovery. I think the review you're doing is very timely. I'm sure you've already had other people provide you with evidence around the rising cost of psychological injury in the workers' compensation scheme. In October last year, we produced a report called Modern Work, which looked at the trajectories of mental health symptoms in the Australian workforce over the last two decades. And that told a very clear picture that over the last 10 years, there's been an increase in mental health symptoms amongst Australian workers, particularly younger workers. Those under 44 years of age and then even more strikingly amongst those in their early twenties. And so as concerning as the situation is at the moment regarding the cost of psychological injury, I think there's reasons to think that it could get worse without further intervention and actions. From, as outlined in my written submission, I would make three broad recommendations for your committee to consider. One is that the Productivity Commission and others have written extensively about the problems that the current system has regarding the burden that there is on workers to prove the link between work and their symptoms early on, which can get in the way of early treatment. So I think we would support the Productivity Commission's recommendation around workers' compensation schemes, needing to look at ways to reduce barriers for workers to be able to get good treatment early. Having said that, I do see, I mentioned I'm a psychiatrist and I do still see a lot of patients who have, there have been significant delays in them getting good evidence-based treatment for their psychological injury. And I think we see that particularly with some of the complex mental health problems that particular industry groups like the emergency service workers have with complex cases of PTSD and the difficulty that it can be linking them in with good quality treatment. Thirdly, we now know how workplaces can be made more mentally healthy and the type of things that workplaces can be doing to try and reduce the risk of psychological injury. And I think it would be great And I think it would be great if the workers' compensation scheme could do more to incentivise workplaces to do the right things or, and to do evidence-based things. There's an awful lot happening in workplaces in the name of mental health, which we now have good evidence probably isn't helping at all. And then fourthly, even though we know answers to those key questions, there's some really big unanswered questions we don't know in this space. And I'm sure the data that your committee has seen has highlighted that this is a massive public health issue in terms of the rising burden of mental health amongst New South Wales workers, particularly young workers. There's only a tiny amount of money that goes towards researching and finding answers to these key questions when you compare them to other disorders and other groups. So I would make a submission that I think if New South Wales wants to get answers to some of these key questions, there's a role for funding research to do that. The New South Wales Government has done that with some sectors, such as the work that they funded to be done focused on emergency service workers, and that's produced some great results in New South Wales. I think there's, based on the data, there's an argument we need to be doing that with the broader workforce in New South Wales. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Would, would either of you like to make a statement, Mr Carpenter or Mr Parker, or both of you?
I'll just do a quick intro. So first of all, you have our submission, so I thought I'd use the opportunity to talk about what is Mates, who we are, what we are and what we do, because I know there's some people here that may not know. So I'll read from my written statement, which essentially Mates is an independent charity established in Queensland in 2008 to reduce the high level of suicide among Australian construction workers. Mates in Construction, New South Wales was established in 2013. Mates provides suicide prevention through community development programmes on sites and by supporting workers in need through case management and a 24/7 helpline available to industry workers and their families. The Mates Programme also works across mining and energy industries. We are also currently conducting a pilot in New South Wales for manufacturing, for the manufacturing industry. Mates was established in response to a major report on suicide, the Aesrap Report, the Australian Institute of Suicide Research and Prevention, within the Queensland commercial building and construction industry. The report found that suicide rates in the industry were higher than the Australian average for men, and that youth suicide within the industry could be as much as 2.38 times more common than among other young Australian men. The Mates Programme is based on the simple idea that suicide is everyone's business. The programme sets out to create a network of carers within the workplace to effectively improve the mental health and wellbeing of workers and reduce suicide. As it cannot be left to the mental health professionals alone, everyone in the industry must play their part. The programmes are delivered across industries regardless of employer or union affiliation. The programme raises awareness of suicide as a preventable problem. It builds a stronger, more resilient workforce. It connects workers to the best available help and support and is evidence-based to measure effectiveness and regularly evaluate the Mates Programme. Mates partner with researchers to inform the industry to effect positive change. One example of this is the Australian Building and Construction Industry Blueprint for Better Mental Health and Suicide Prevention. The blueprint assists mainly medium to small businesses to benchmark against real outcomes, not just a tick and flick, and helps create a wellbeing policy development. Finally, in June 2021, Mates was acknowledged by the World Health Organisation as an example of world's best practice in the WHO Live Life Implementation Guide for Suicide Prevention in Countries. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for those opening statements. I'll kick off with a couple of questions and then I'll hand over to my colleagues. Probably to you, Professor Harvey, to start with. So what we've seen in the workers' compensation system in New South Wales is psychological claims going up quite significantly over the last, you know, six or seven years, which, and then that means that more money needs to be, or funding needs to be given to Icare to cover the costs. But we've also heard that, that the scheme, you know, we've heard some evidence of, of people's claims being denied as well. But I suppose what I really wanted to ask about was, what are the drivers, do you think, behind these significant increases in psychological injuries compared to where we were in 2014, 15, before the exponential increase in that, in that growth?
Yeah. So I'd make a couple of points. The growth that you describe is not unique to New South Wales. We, we've seen that as an international trend, and of course, each country has very different systems, but certainly most developed countries, there has been a stark shift over the last 20 years, where the, the reasons, the health reasons for people leaving the workforce either permanently or for a period of time for other than short-term sickness absence, has shifted from being musculoskeletal being the number one cause to psychological injury or mental health being the number one cause. So there's an international shift there. I, I think in terms of the drivers of that, I think part of it is around recognition and labelling. A lot of people who leave, who have a period of time out of the workforce through injury, it's often through a combination of factors. And I think we as a society have got more comfortable labelling mental health when it's present, rather than putting it through under other labels. So I think that's part of it. I don't think it's the entire solution, the entire answer though. And as I, as I pointed out from our Modern Work report, what we're seeing very clearly is even when you strip away those changes in diagnostic practices and GPs being better at picking up depression and anxiety, when you just ask about the symptoms that people are experiencing, we're seeing workers reporting more symptoms now than they used to. So I think it is being partly driven by the broader changes in society of the rising burden of mental ill health. Then, of course, the question becomes what's driving that? Our report suggested that workplace factors and, and modern work is part of the explanation. We know that lower levels of job security, more lower levels of control in the workplace, sometimes higher demand, those factors can all contribute to rates of mental ill health amongst workers. But it's almost certainly non-work factors as well. We know that adolescents are leaving our education system with a higher burden of mental health than they did in previous generations. And so there is a question to be asked around, you know, what's going on in our society to cause that to happen? And I can speculate about my views about it, but I think that the honest answer is there's not a consensus about that. It's, it's probably a combination of increasing inequality in society, the rise of the internet and social media and really unfiltered information getting to young people while their emotions and is still developing. There, there is a theory that, and I should say, an unproven theory, that, but I think a theory that, that probably, that I suspect might be correct, that the way in which we talk about mental health in society and the sort of the advent of mental health awareness being everywhere, that there's a risk that that has had a negative impact on children, even if it might be a good thing for adults, that we, we, without realising it, we have changed the way that children think about symptoms and distress and the way they handle it, and that might have longer-term consequences through into their adult life. These are theories at the moment. So the short answer is, we don't quite know what's causing the rising burden of mental health, but we need to find an answer for it because it's predicted to be the number one cause of disability in Australia going forward. So it's a major problem. We don't have a clear answer to that question.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, sure.
Look, as I'd support what Sam's saying in his area of expertise, I'd just underline that I've been studying the transformation of workplaces for the last 35 years, and the fundamental, common thread through that has been rising work intensification, right? The expectation of people to do more with less. In some consulting firms, it used to be called management by stress. They would just cut the staffing levels till they see how far they could go. I've given you some evidence on page 19 of my submission. I've picked this up mainly through many years of study of skill formation. And the reason skill formation is relevant to this is that skill formation is looking at workers at the point of entry into the workplace. When you're looking at workers' compensation, you're looking at points of re-entry. So there are similar sorts of issues. What are the structures of support as people try and go back, in this case of workers going back in, in the case of skill formation, it's about actual entry. That data on page 19 is pretty damning. You look at the data on what, to what extent workers are reporting they're getting on the job training, and it's in free fall, basically. And there's, within the skill formation literature, there's a nice dichotomy or framing. They say if you're looking at workplaces which are good at developing human capability, they're expansive workplaces. They have strong structures of social support. More and more workplaces, however, becoming constrictive. And so I support everything that Sam said. In fact, he's, you know, more expert on the psychiatry side of things than me. But just very tangibly, structures of social support have been run down. And we've heard a lot of talk about, you know, the productivity miracle of the 80s and 90s. When you go back, I did my PhD on this, that was, that wasn't a miraculous breakthrough in, you know, magical productivity. That was workers doing more with less. I documented that absolutely comprehensively. Yeah. And, and then you, then they're wondering, oh, productivity's plateaued. Well, you get a one-off sugar hit. You can get a utilisation of labour being more fully deployed, say, over a 10-year period, but you can, you can't keep on getting blood out of a stone. And so I find it ironic that, you know, businesses now wandering around saying we've got these massive skill shortages. They've been squeezing out the capacity for coherent skill formation. And that, you're picking that up on the return to work data too. We're seeing this, you look at that, the data we reported at the back of our report, where employers are engaged with their workers and provide support. They've got a 25, not, not 25% improvement, 25 percentage points better return to work rate. And so I think this issue is something that, when we're talking about workers' comp, you've got to look at what's going on in the workplaces themselves. And I think that is, in a funny sense, poor hours workers' comp picks it up. Like, when you're looking at problems of skills, when you're looking at problems of wages, you're looking at problems of working time, families absorb that shock. It's in the workers' comp system, you've got an integrated ecosystem where the costs of this are picked up. And I think that's why workers' comp's seeing this more starkly than just about any other area of workforce management.
The, from, we've heard a lot recently through this process on early intervention, early recovery, getting people back to work as quickly as possible, that nobody likes the scenario of people being without treatment and out of work for a very long period of time. The implication is that the system might be a bit too rigid, or that there might be too many delays, that it might not be exactly fit for purpose. Any comments about what's wrong with, with the current system in terms of that early recovery and early back to work and what, what could be done to change that? From, from anyone?
I'll have a go first.
Sure.
I think there's, I think there's multiple layers of problems with the current system in terms of what we optimally want when, when a worker has mental health symptoms. Mental health is different to a number of physical injuries in that sometimes the, the ease of which you can describe what proportion of somebody's illness is due to workplace factors as opposed to non-workplace factors, i- is more complicated. If somebody trips over and breaks their ankle, it's very clear that that was at work. But if someone's depressed and they've, there are things going on in the workplace, but also things in their home, trying to pick that apart can, can take time. And so after that, the 10-week period we have here in New South Wales around that sort of presumptive liability, provisional liability, i- if, if there are, the delays while the level of work involvement in a, in a psychological injury is problematic. Number one for the delays, but also problematic for the, the entrenching of positions in, in terms of the worker and their clinicians having to increasingly make the argument that the workplace was a toxic influence and that that sort of, that makes, then makes the return to work harder, once you've got to the end of that debate, quite apart from the delays. Beyond that, I would say there are also problems with the way in which patients are managed within the, within the workers' compensation system, once they get linked in with clinicians. I, I mentioned that for some psychological conditions, it can be quite hard for workers to find, it, it, there can be a lot of, it can be a complicated system to try and find a provider that's got the right expertise for you. And so sometimes workers, there's a long delay in them getting evidence-based treatment. And then that's partly because of the complexities in the mental health care system. It's also because an increasing number of mental health care providers explicitly say they won't see people who are coming through on workers' compensation because they don't want to be sitting around waiting for decisions to be made around liability and, and whether their bills get paid or not, dependent on that. And then thirdly, I think increasingly what we're finding with mental health conditions is there, we know what treatments help in terms of reducing symptoms. There often has to be a second line of interventions in order to facilitate the functional recovery of people, to be able to get them back to work. And within our system and indeed within our training of clinicians, I think there's more that we could do to try and upskill the clinicians to know about how to, to get people back to work. You know, I did, I did six years at medical school and then another six years training in psychiatry. Throughout all of that, that 12 years of training, I don't recall anybody ever teaching me about how to assess someone's capacity for work, what sort of interventions we need to get people back to work, in spite of the fact that survey after survey has told us that what patients care about is getting back their functional recovery, getting back to work, socialising, doing all the things they want to do with their life more than symptom recovery. And so I think there are problems within the, within the treatment that's provided under workers' compensation, that we, we don't get that vocational recovery right either. And there's a range of perverse incentives that operate within, once a worker's compensation claim has been made, that can get in the way of somebody recovering.
Professor Buchanan, you're nodding a lot through that. Was there anything you wanted to?
Well, I just want to let you know, Sam and I haven't caucused on this stuff. But, you know, I, I'd just like to underline what he said. Just only, I teach a course on the business of health. I've been looking at health reform for quite some time. And, you know, the, the hot topic is integrated care. And it's, you know, more talked about than practice. And what's interesting, looking at workers' comp, is that you need integrated care. And what you actually get with the workers' comp system though, is visibility of what happens when you don't have integrated care and you've got underperforming aspects of the health system being documented. So if you have a mental health problem in the community at large, the family sees the problem and then it's just lost visibility. If something gets registered in the mental, as a health, mental health problem in the workers' comp system, it's there for everyone to see. So this is where I think, when we're thinking about the challenges of workers' comp, let's not single out the workers' comp system as failing on some way. What you're getting is deeper problems in the health system as well as the labour market being manifest in a way that researchers see and families see, but by and large aren't visible to policymakers.
Questions from other committee members?
I'm happy to jump in. I listened earlier, the panelists talked about work intensification, inequality, job control, skill formation, and the erosion of structures of social support. It sounds like this is neoliberalism is driving the mental health problem. Do you think that's a fair assessment?
Let's not make it too ideological, Mr Down.
That's what it sounded like to me.
Professor Buchanan? No, 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 no. Look, I, I've looked at this from many ways. These problems predate the ascendancy of neoliberalism. I mean, I'm, I'm one of these people who thinks that, you know, neoliberalism's beaten up a bit too much. These are, these are deeper, and can I say I'm not a neoliberal? Can I get that on the record?
I'm sure I'm true.
But there are deeper problems in the way in which a market economy works. And these started to become very seriously manifested in the late 70s, early 80s, way before neoliberalism. And even good employers are pressured by market disciplines. And I think what we've seen is the capacity of And I think what we've seen is the capacity of employers who want to do the right thing increasingly limited by the increasing problems of competition. And so I think my, when I'm, you know, we're only at a preliminary stage, but I've studied the labour market for a very long time. And what you have in the labour market now are very weak systems of coordination and capturing the benefits of collaboration. And that's, that's kind of what we've got to be looking at. So, look, you know, you could say you're not adopting a neoliberal policy. A lot of people who say they're opposed to neoliberalism are still thinking in terms of market design and things like that. You know, that's not a very helpful frame of reference. So I'd actually say, where are the pressures coming from? And it's the increasing competitive pressures which predate neoliberalism. And we've got to think about ways in which we manage those pressures. You know, I'm a great supporter of William Beveridge on this point, right? Markets are good servants and bad masters, right? And so we've got to think about how do we structure our affairs that we get the best out of markets at the moment where that's not happening.
I'm not sure our remit goes beyond the workers' comp system. So, I mean, some of those structural issues are obviously something to think about in the broader public debate. I suppose everyone in this panel is in some way focused on the sort of preventative measures in terms of, you know, establishing healthier workplaces. So perhaps maybe across the panel, if you could, what do we need to do in terms of establishing healthier workplaces? And I'd also perhaps ask you to make some comment about the government's healthier workplaces strategy. My sense is it's not particularly effective. What do we need to do to make it more effective? What kind of interventions would be appropriate to recommend for a public policy response?
Well, mates in construction is not the be all to end all. We're also politically independent, so I'll stress that. But, look, we are prevention. Essentially, we're looking at, you know, stopping it before it occurs. We were talking about earlier about people who present within the workforce who already have pre-existing mental health conditions. What we have found is, and this is anecdotally, is when we train them on-site, so when we run through our workshops on-site, that they end up championing the cause because we normalise what we're talking about with them. They get it and we're normalising it for them amongst their peers. So they end up coming to us and wanting to do the next bit of training, which is the connector training after general awareness. And that is somebody who can keep someone safe while connecting them on to support. So that's one, what's one beautiful thing about the mates program and how it works collectively amongst the workforce. There was some stuff that I, we were talking about earlier around job insecurity. Construction, what came out of that ASRAP report was that, you know, the construction industry is quite unique, apart from being male-dominated, but there's some issues around job insecurity. And, you know, the life of the project is as good as the life of the job. They're always thinking, have I got a job to go to? It is the only industry that I know of that they work themselves so hard to work themselves out of a job. So it's quite unique there, but we, you know, other stuff that came through with that report was talking about, you know, high incidence of alcohol and drug use. There was, I'm just trying to think, Nigel, some other stuff that came out. But a lot of stuff around, you know, relationships issues within, outside of work, but then coming to work and not feeling as though it's comfortable to talk amongst their peers about their emotional issues. And, you know, there's plenty of research around to say that blokes aren't really good at doing that either. Women are much better at doing that, but we don't make them feel comfortable. And that's what we try to address as part of, so demystifying about mental health and suicide. And then hoping, you know, giving them the tools that they can spot the problem. Because we say they spend more time at work than they do with their loved ones, family or friends, so we think they're best placed to pick up these signs, as long as we give them the tools, you know? And give them the tools and then connect them on to support. We don't seek to be the mental health professionals. We don't seek to be Professor Harvey. We don't seek to be the psychologists or the psychiatrists. We just, we just need to get them there. Because one of the big things that came out of the ASRAP report was ninety-three percent of construction workers who had suicided in the past never sought professional help. They either didn't know where to find it, they didn't want to, or the big one was, they weren't encouraged to. So it is about, it's about help offering, help seeking, but certainly about the offering more than the seeking. So it is about getting them to come together. And I often say mental health and suicide can be complex issues, but maybe, just looking at our research, where we've had a reduction of suicides within the Queensland construction industry by nearly eight percent, that it may, the answer may lie within the most important commodity we have within our industry. It's our people. So, yeah, I might leave it at that.
Can I, as I mentioned, sort of one of my, the research program I've been running over the last ten years has really been seeking to answer that question. How do you create more mentally healthy workplaces? And if I could make four comments around that. I think the first would be, things that seem like a good idea don't always work. And so the biggest example we've had of that in workplaces has been debriefing, where there was this idea that after a traumatic incident, we should get people together, we should do debriefing to talk is to good. And that seemed like a good idea, was rolled out en masse. And then when the research caught up, we found not only was it not helpful, there was evidence that it was harmful and it increased the rates of things like post-traumatic stress disorder because it got in the way of people's usual coping. So there is, one of, one of the reasons that I'm motivated to be researching in this area is because I see a lot of good intention and money being wasted in workplaces on things that don't work or might be harmful. We've done research showing that mental health awareness in a workplace by itself doesn't really do anything. What does work, we, I mentioned there are psychological, things we know are hazards in the workplace for mental health, be it bullying, job insecurity, an imbalance of demands and controls. If they can be identified and reduced, that has a preventative impact. Secondly, training managers and leaders in the workplace around mental health does make a difference. We did a study here in New South Wales with firefighters in New South Wales and showed that when you train the managers just how to have the skills and the confidence to be able to spot people who are struggling and speak to them, we had a reduction in workers' compensation-related injury within those managers' teams. And then once you've done those two things, there is some stuff you can do with individual workers about sort of improving their coping skills and that sort of notion of resilience training, but it comes third after those other two. But there's, New South Wales is now one of the world leaders around thinking about how to create mentally healthy workplaces. The World Health Organisation is going to be releasing their first-ever guidance on what workplaces should be doing around mental health at the start of Mental Health Month. Myself and other academics in New South Wales co-wrote parts of that. So there's guidance out there about what workplaces should be doing. I think at the moment workplaces sometimes struggle to know which of the many voices they should be listening to. And so it's very hard for them to be coordinating their actions.
Can I just ask you something? Yeah. Really interestingly, we heard, you know, some evidence earlier that debrief is, you know, still this thing that we should be doing, that it's really important and it can avoid. So where are you suggesting, how long is this research that's suggesting otherwise? And the second part of the question, sorry, is, and how prevalent is that knowledge in the places that we need to have that knowledge at this point in time?
Well, the key review that brought together the evidence to show that debriefing wasn't helpful after, after an incident was published in 2002. So it's now twenty years ago. And all of the major guidance that's provided to, for example, the Australian guidance on preventing post-traumatic stress disorder, which is updated regularly, that's been very clear on it regularly. But I think it's a classic example of where that translation between what the science tells us works and what happens in workplaces has been far too slow.
So we have a postvention where we might, we get asked to come out when a workplace has been impacted by a suicide. The very first point, we say to them, we need to leave it for a few days. We need everybody to get over the initial shock. And then when we come in, we're very cognisant about not impacting on people or triggering people, about the language that we're using and ensuring that we have our case management with them and ensuring that we have counselling services available as well. So we don't, when a builder will ring us and say, we've just had a suicide on site, we need your backside here right now. We say, no, sorry, we actually need to let it sit for a little while, let him get over the initial shock, and then we come in and do our postvention.
Interesting. And can I ask another very different question? And, yeah, perhaps the professors, but possibly. Is, just in relation to the field of sort of climate change and what that is presenting in terms of, you, I heard some evidence recently about the profession dealing with underlying mental health causes and from the northern rivers and the experience that had just happened up there. And we heard some evidence earlier about workers who are now so traumatised they will not be able to return back to their workplace because of dealing with that extreme weather event, et cetera. And, you know, anybody who's reading anything with their eyes open right now knows that we are going to be experiencing this more and more. Is this something that the current scheme in terms of mental health and workplaces, is this something we need to be really more cognisant of? Is there work happening in that space and are we prepared?
I think, I mean, there is no doubt that there is, that there is a link between cumulative adversity and mental health. And so certainly one of the things, we're quite involved, there's quite a lot of research happening in New South Wales around the mental health impacts of the various natural disasters. And we know from, we know from the Ash Wednesday bushfires in the eighties that you can still see the mental health consequences of that in the children twenty years later. We are concerned that there are certainly some areas that have been hit by drought, then bushfires, then COVID, then floods. And we know it's so sort of successive hits that can really chip away at people's resilience. And so I think it goes back to my earlier point that when you look at the figures coming through the New South Wales Workers' Compensation Scheme, part of that is about what's happening within workplaces, part of it is about what's happening more broadly in society. And that if we have people being exposed to those cumulative events. I mean, most people, I think sometimes we can underestimate people's resilience and that's part of the problem with debriefing, we get in the way of people's coping. And people can be resilient to single events, but when it's multiple events, one after another, that's when we start to really worry about the mental health consequences. And so certainly we and others are looking very closely at those regions to try and map what's happening.
But what I think's important about your question and a kind of something I was going to add to Sam's earlier argument, that I think Sam outlined the things you could do at enterprise level, but I'm a big supporter of John Donne's, you know, no man is an island, no workplace is an island. And by you raising that question about something that's across workplaces, that's where something like a workers' comp scheme can get the economies of scale and get the benefits of coordination. Look, you know, we're only at the early stages in our scoping report, but that's the thing that's just hitting me as a labour market researcher. There's massive coordination failures, you know, in the labour market generally. But it's particularly stark in the area of climate change. That's not a problem of any one employer. Right? And it's, and there's that classic expression, you know, smart for one, dumb for all. You know, it's smart for one employer not to do anything about it, but it's dumb when none of them do anything. And so this is where you can't expect any one employer in this area to handle those kinds of shocks. And that's the beauty of a workers' comp scheme. You know, workers' comp schemes are one of the earliest forms of labour market, you know, and we should be proud of that. And, you know, and I think we should be thinking about what do they look like moving forward? And it's not how do we make them more efficient financial enterprises? How do they actually manage these changing forms of claims for support? So, like I say, it's early days for us, but I think you've got to think about what can the scheme do to help overcome coordination problems? It's not just about how do we make it more efficient? Or how do we get the liabilities down? It's, no, what are the opportunities we've got with this infrastructure that we really haven't been fully reaping? And that's getting that positive vision moving forward that I think you should be thinking about. But like I say, these are early days, I don't have the final report on this, I don't have the scenarios for you. But I think your question is getting to that issue, you know? We must remember that no workplace is an island because we kind of lost that vision.
Thank you.
Further questions from committee members, Mr. Powell?
Professors Buchanan and Harvey, you both talked about, on that point about the future, but you talked about sort of the model of a healthy workplace. And a lot of that is support, which is what mates do, in a sense, in making sure that there's a support network there as well. As we've got more people working from home, are you seeing sort of a rise in terms of isolation and mental health presentations as a result of that? And people not being able to either pick up the signs in terms of other employees and what's going on? Or to know those sort of networks to interact with?
It's a difficult question to answer at the moment. So certainly during COVID and during the lockdowns, we saw an increased number of people reporting mental health symptoms and we saw an increase in people using the Black Dog Institute website or using Lifeline to get support. What we didn't and still are yet to see is an increase in rates of suicide internationally as a result of COVID or subsequent to COVID. Anecdotally though, what we're, what we're beginning to observe is that the impact of COVID is not spread evenly across the workforce. And I think there are some people who've been able to bounce back from it and some types of work that works really well with that hybrid blended model of some at home, whereas others doesn't. And I think we're seeing some people who are struggling to make that transition back into the workplace. And we're certainly, I mentioned earlier, I think, I think making sure managers are trained about how to spot people who are struggling and to intervene is one of the most effective things that workplaces can do. How do you do that when you're seeing somebody over a screen? You can do it, but it's a different skill set. And I'm not sure, it'll, it'll take a while for us to sort of really see the lessons of that flow through.
Did you want to add anything, Professor Harvey?
Yeah, well, look, you've got to remember.
Professor Buchanan, sorry.
That's right. Look, you've got to remember, throughout most of human history, people have worked from home, right? It's only in the last couple of hundred years that we've had this idea that there's a deep separation. And what we're, what we're going to be witnessing is a reconfiguring of the relationship between work at home and work in designated workplaces. And I think that's something that's going to have to be thought about for the workers' comp scheme because the workers' comp schemes were one of the defining institutions for work as a place away from home, right? If you go back to the early legislation, it was about protecting work men as opposed to servants. Because throughout most of history, there's been a bucket load of servants who were working at home. It was working men's compensation in that role. And where, you know, it's too early to tell, but I think COVID is actually making us rethink that relationship between work at home and that's something that's going to have to be thought through. And, you know, Sam's right, I mean, I'm not a doctor, but diagnosing someone over Zoom is going to be quite different to having them in your office. But then they're also, we're going to have to think about, well, what are the structures of social support we have around people at home? You know, and maybe, you know, that's not unprecedented, you know? The family daycare, for instance, often has networks of family daycares. They're home-based workers, but they do get kind of structures of support, so. And the other thing to keep in mind is you've got to remember a lot of people look to home as a protection from the problems at work. So, you know, a lot of mental health problems come from bullying. If you're working from home, you can often take yourself out of the toxic environment. Now, I'm not saying that's going to fully offset the problems of lack of social support, but there's going to be causality running in both directions on this.
There's also some people who look for workers, the refuge from home.
Absolutely, no, I'm a hot child, I'm a big supporter of that, absolutely.
Unfortunately, we have run out of time. So thank you for attending this hearing. Committee members may have additional questions for you after the hearing. The committee has resolved that the answers to these, along with any answers to questions taken on notice today, be returned within.
I just want to table quickly a document.
Oh, sure.
The impact of suicide prevention strategy on reducing economic cost in New South Wales' construction industry. If I could leave that with you, it's a, it's a study done by, well, no less than, sorry, I've forgotten his name. Christopher Doran, so I'll leave that with you.
Thank you. And if there's any further information you wanted to provide to us via the committee staff, we're absolutely happy to take a look at, take a look at that. Thank you so much for coming. take a look at that. Thank you so much for coming.
Very much. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
So could I ask each witness, starting from my left, to please state their name and position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation, starting with you, Ms. Brown?
Tracy Brown, manager of Workplace Health and Safety and Workers' Compensation Policy and Membership Services for the Australian Industry Group. I solemnly, seely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Greenwood, Policy Manager, Workers' Comp, WHS and Regulation for Business New South Wales. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thanks.
And David Harding, Executive Director of Policy and Advocacy at Business New South Wales. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
I'd ask each of the witnesses if they would like to start by making a short opening statement and please keep it to no more than a couple of minutes each. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. As a National Employer Association, AI Group has visibility of issues across most of the Australian Workers' Compensation schemes. Most of the schemes are facing the same issues as New South Wales in relation to increasing psychological injury claims and difficulties with return to work. We see any opportunity to contribute to ways that these outcomes can be improved as very important. All employers want to see their workplaces functioning effectively. And having people on workers' compensation and not successfully returning to work is not a good outcome for anybody. So we see a great opportunity to be part of this review, looking at it both from the workers' compensation perspective, but also from health and safety. AI Group is a member of Safe Work Australia. And we've been actively involved over recent years in the development of the National Return to Work Strategy and also the extensive work that's been done over recent times in psychological injury prevention work as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding or Ms. Greenwood. Would either of you like to make a, yeah, Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Chair. Business New South Wales welcomes the opportunity today on Are You OK Day to make a submission to the New South Wales Legislative Council Standing Committee on Law and Justice's 2022 Review of the Workers' Compensation Scheme, which is focusing on, of course, mental health issues. As New South Wales is peak business organisation, Business New South Wales has more than forty thousand member businesses across New South Wales. We work with businesses spanning across all the industry sectors, including small, medium and large enterprises. We operate through a network in metropolitan and regional New South Wales, and we represent the needs of businesses at a local, state and federal government level. Sydney Business Chamber or Sydney's Chamber of Commerce, as it was originally known, is Australia's second oldest company. In 1912, we set up an insurance company which was instrumental in establishing the New South Wales Workers' Compensation Scheme. Therefore, we have DNA and we have retained a keen and supportive interest in the progress of New South Wales workers' compensation ever since. As we know, the focus of this review is on the increase in psychological claims within the scheme. Although the differences between physical injuries and psychological injuries are many and varied and is a topic best suited to those within the medical professions, we can probably all agree that, given the differences in attributes between two types of injuries, it is clear that the current scheme's one size fits all, both in relation to how claims are managed and how risk is shared between the scheme and larger employers, may be flawed. The next question is therefore, can these flaws be overcome by making changes to the current design of the scheme? Or does New South Wales need a new tailored approach to better managing psychological illnesses within our workplaces? Business New South Wales's submission contains recommendations relating to both aspects of this question. And we look forward to assisting the committee in finding solutions. And Chair, if you will, I'd like to correct a typographical error on the record in page 10 of our submission where we we would like to correct it to words, increasing the likelihood of workers with a psychological injury retaining to at least partial work capacity rather than as it states in our report, reducing.
That's absolutely fine. I'll make sure that that's corrected. All right, I'll start off with a couple of questions and then I'll hand over to my colleagues. With the current scheme, we've heard that it's probably a bit too rigid. I think you said that it's 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 very much trying to have a one size fits all, which doesn't really work. It's not not very tailored. What would you say are the biggest problems with the current scheme in terms of it might not be conducive to getting people back to work as quickly as possible?
I'll I'll start on that one and then maybe pass to my colleagues. Look, I think I think it's very true to state that what we heard from previous witnesses is that physical injury is very attributable to the workplace and is easily attributable to a time, a place and an effect of that injury. But the much wider reasons behind psychological injury point to shared responsibility rather than one point of responsibility or a very narrow point of responsibility within that workplace. Especially as today, as we've just been hearing, that workplace can be blurred between the home and and a different place of employment. And and we would also, so we would talk to the actual methodology probably being not fit for purpose for dealing with much more complex causatory causes behind psychological injury. And also the the premise that we're starting to see in the process being applied that the injury was indeed the fault of the place of employment is probably an assumption that needs to be questioned, given the complexity of issues behind many of these these claims. We're also we're also seeing a very practical application of process which is excluding employers from their voice in in the in the first 10, 13 weeks or thereabouts of investigation, which means that employers are quite often really out of the process of understanding what happened to their employee. And therefore only only hear about it when effectively it becomes their responsibility. I might stop there and and pass to my right.
I'll just add to that that in our experience that a lot of the the psych injuries because the major mechanisms are to do with bullying, harassment and then stress at work. It's often related to the relationship breakdown. So that's something where a WHS perspective and and focusing on good relationships at work is is an important factor because if there's that good relationship at work, then then that will increase the chances of a successful return to work. Another issue that exacerbates the the lack of return to work, there are two. One is where we've got anecdotal evidence from members who say that the nominated treading doctors are saying to the injured worker, you don't have to go back to that workplace regardless of what the legislation says. They actually tell the injured worker, you don't have to go back to that workplace despite there being suitable duties. And then the final point is in relation to that relationship breakdown, what we're finding is with the provisional liability as opposed to the liability decision at the end of the 13 weeks, the whole provisional liability provisions is not being explained properly either to the employer or to the injured worker. So when the injured worker is receiving the weekly benefits and medical treatment on a provisional basis, they don't understand it is on a provisional basis. They feel vindicated. And then they think, yeah, you know, I am in the right, the employer's in the wrong. And then ultimately, if it does get declined, that relationship breakdown is beyond repair. And then they're left, they're lost, they don't know, they don't understand. And it probably exacerbates their injury. So we're very strongly of the view that the the relationship's the key. The WHS approach of a shared responsibility is very much the right one to take. And and our policy committee is very strongly of the view that if if those injured workers don't have a compensable injury, there's a lack of support outside of of workers' comp. So workers' comp is there for a particular reason. And if if liabilities decline, where do those people go?
I agree with everything that's been said so far. And I think one of the things that really creates significant difficulties when we're looking at psychological injuries is the lack of early intervention. If a some if a worker falls over and breaks their arm at work, the supervisor is going to be very comfortable about having a conversation with them. If the claim has arisen out of either real or perceived conflict in the workplace, sometimes there are doctor's certificates which says that there can't be any contact with the workplace. But even outside of that, supervisors and managers are often uncomfortable about how they initiate a conversation about early intervention. They're worried that they might make the injury worse. Talking to somebody about a broken arm is not going to make their broken arm worse. Talking to someone about a psychological injury, people will often feel that that will make it worse. And lots of discomfort, and particularly if there's conflict between the supervisor and the worker. All of those normal recovery processes just don't occur. I think there's a much stronger need for a psychological injury for an earlier intervention initiated by the claims agent, particularly for smaller employers who don't have the HR manager or the safety manager who can be the buffer between the worker and where the conflict has occurred. And getting that earlier third party who can come in and potentially be part of the conflict resolution through either a rehabilitation service mediation or a service which is being referred to as facilitated discussions in some of the schemes to try and deal with interpersonal conflict so that those return to work can occur.
Thank you for that. I I think like almost every witness has spoken about early intervention, you know, early recovery and and return to work. Just I suppose to put to you, maybe to to clear something up. Is there any reason at all why an employer wouldn't want an employee to come back to work? I mean, we've heard potentially that, you know, that some employers might want certain claims denied or delayed. And I don't think that's the case, but I'll I would put it to you to maybe clarify you know, you know, to to respond to that. I can understand why maybe insurers might want that, but I'm not not certain as to why an employer would wouldn't wouldn't want workers to get back to work as quickly as possible.
I I think it would be very dependent on the case, case by case, but I I think as a as a structural flaw that we have in the system of the employer is excluded from that initial 13 weeks as we've spoken about. They feel themselves to be isolated from the process and perhaps it is as Elizabeth spoke to a couple of minutes ago, it it starts to bake in a sense of transactional fault and fault and responsibility onto the employer who may particularly if they're a small employer, be confused, worried and frankly upset by the whole situation that they find themselves in. I I think within New South Wales, as compared to say, someone like Germany or Austria, we have a prevalence of small businesses. We we don't have a very strong medium sized business community, which makes us perhaps more vulnerable, less resilient to what our members call a pandemic sweeping through us at the moment because a lot of our a lot of our businesses are are small and don't have access to the normal the 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 normal, not only lack of governance, but also lack of HR and so on within 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 their own organisation. It's a passing comment, but I think we are a little more vulnerable as a business community here.
I think also if there's been conflict in the workplace, it can be often very difficult for particularly in smaller businesses to be able to have an environment in which that person who has put in the claim can come back to work in a safe and supported manner. So I think anything that can be done to deal with the conflict early would make it easier for employers to be comfortable with the person returning to work. We do have the specific group of psychological injury claims which are probably the most problematic and that's the management action where a business has been going through genuine needed disciplinary action and maybe in a situation where there is about to be a termination of employment. A claims lodged, the employer feels often that the claim has been lodged to avoid the termination. And so they would be the sorts of claims where you are likely to have that scenario of well, the person was almost out of the business. We don't want to manage their return to work back into the business. And I think in those circumstances, it's really important for the scheme to recognise that it may not be in the interests of either the employer or the injured worker to really drive down that path of saying the return to work has to be in this workplace. And identifying early in the claim by the agent that maybe in this situation, the best thing for everybody is to be looking for alternate employment for that worker rather than putting the worker in a position where they're in limbo for a number of months. They don't want to go back to the workplace. The employer doesn't want them back in the workplace, but they're not being supported to look for other options.
Just a final one from me and then I'll hand over to colleagues. But if psychological claims costs continue to rise exponentially, it could potentially lead to increase in premiums to to employers. Something in if you don't know, maybe you could tag it on notice, but how onerous at the moment or costly is the the premiums to to your members? Because I I've heard anecdotally that it can be quite quite a significant cost of doing business at times.
Yeah, I might just start more generally about insurance burden on New South Wales businesses. We know that the the cost of insurance is more generally across the umbrella of rising it upwards of four times the rate of inflation. So it is it is a really significant and in some cases, the the largest cost burden on on a small business. If you add to that the 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 potential significant rise in workers' compensation, then this becomes a very, very significant real and present danger. I'll pass to Elizabeth.
The particular issue with the premiums and and the costs for psychological injuries relates to the larger employers, the ones who who have to pay what's known as a claims performance adjustment. So that's the sharing of of the risk between the scheme and the larger employers. They have an extra component on their premium. That formula, which we don't know what it is since the 2015 changes because it's a confidential filing. And then once it's approved, it's confidential. So so employers now, no one knows what what the formula is. They just know. No one knows what what the formula is, they just know what comes in their notice. Um, what we do know is that there's a multiplier that's used for the claims performance adjustment. That's extraordinarily volatile. What we also know is the costs that go into that multiplier are the weekly benefits, so that they're the premium impacting costs. The longer an injured worker is in receipt of weekly benefits, the bigger that amount that goes into the very volatile. Formula is, and a lot of the time, the employers theoretically that's supposed to be because the employers. Managed return to work, with psychological claims, that's not necessarily the case, so. Um, with the latest formula, I've actually had members um ringing me, the 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 worst one I heard was. He had one psychological injury claim for twelve months, the weeklies came to a hundred thousand dollars. Now, claims performance adjustment, it it impacts them for three years. Instead of being an extra amount, that a hundred thousand dollars has been passed through directly. So he has to pay on top of his premium, an extra hundred thousand dollars for year one. And he will have to pay that extra hundred thousand dollars for year two and year three. So that's that's just this first twelve months, so it's a direct pass through, it's a massive problem. Uh, A, we don't understand what the formula is, we don't understand why they're doing it. Um, and and B, it's just so unsustainable, it's ridiculous, and it's having a massive impact. On redundancies, the the economy, the the ability for employers to keep trading.
All right, thank you, further questions from committee members?
Kick off, thanks for your attendance today, I look, I wanted to put a couple of proposals that have come from other submissions and get your feedback on them. Uh, there's two proposals from the um Australian Rehabilitation Provider Association to. One is in relation to uh where a re- return to work is not anticipated within four weeks to have. Uh, a rehabilitation provider appointed mandated, uh and the other is that uh. Just for all psychological injuries, uh you would have a a rehab provider appointed. Do you, what what's the position of the uh?
I think that's an excellent, an excellent idea, in fact, Sarah's um currently having a trial where rehab providers are acting as a mediator. Uh, I think rehab providers, especially for small businesses, um they're they're invaluable, they help small business. Manage um, manage their claims and and in two thousand and sixteen, when there was a transfer from scheme agents. To the in-house claim agents, the rehab providers stepped up. And and actually did the claims management for the employer, so without rehab providers. Um, you wouldn't have had return to work rates um as good as they were, even though they were declining. So I I think that's a, that's an excellent idea.
I think it goes to the point I was making before as well, that particularly for small employers, if there's a psychological injury claim, they're not going to know what to do with it. They need a third party who can come in and assist them and not be the agent, because the problem with it being the agent. Because psychological injury claims take some time to be determined, it gets confusing then about whether the agent is there to help them, or if the agent is the person that they have to prove. That they are unwell to, and so that independent rehabilitation provider who can support the injured worker. But also be part of identifying what are the conflicts that we need to deal with, how can we overcome them? How can we get this person back to work, maybe before the claim's even been determined? Um, that's going to give us really good outcomes, I think rehab providers are essential in doing that. Whether it needs to be four weeks for all claims might be a little bit debatable depending on the types of claims, but for psychological injury claims, the sooner the better.
Right, okay, and um so the other proposition I wanted to put to you is the one that's been suggested by Black Dog Institute. Uh, Productivity Commission Inquiry into Mental Health has recommended that irrespective of liability, that there be six months. Uh, uh, support for um. For mental health treatment for psychological claims, what what would be your view on that proposal?
I'd like to know who's going to pay for it.
And I think that was my point as well, um providing that support might be incredibly valuable from a. Community mental health.
It might pay for itself, isn't that the possibility that?
But if an individual employer is having to pay for the costs of a claim which has not been accepted as their liability. Then they will be taking, particularly for a large employer, um with this sort of example that um Elizabeth just used. They will be taking an extra burden for a claim that is not their liability, and that would seem to be an unfair. Burden to put on an individual employer.
Workers' comp is a trust, it's it's a statutory trust, it was established. Uh, employers pay premiums so that their workers who are injured at the workplace. Uh, get the proper treatment, and and if it's appropriate, they return to work or or recover at work. So employers don't mind paying premiums if it's their responsibility and it's fair. Um, I I think. That um, as I said earlier, you know, there needs to be another bucket of money, if if a claim's not compensable. Under the workers' comp scheme, there still needs to be a bucket of money, so. I agree, I agree that there needs to be support, but to lump it all in the workers' comp scheme when liability's been declined. Especially with the volatility in premiums, especially with larger employers, that's a pretty difficult pill to swallow. Especially when employers are effectively being shut out of the scheme.
I mean, so I suppose the the sort of follow up question, well, is that uh, you know, it could, uh, given that. We've heard from uh in injured workers that the process of disputed liability and. That that once they get caught into that systemic uh adversarial process, that that has. Uh, deleterious effect on their uh mental health and ultimately impacts their likelihood of returning to work. But actually, that kind of intervention may actually pay for itself if they're getting early treatment, there's no arguing about the treatment. They've got six months to be able to access the treatment, do you accept that if that in that circumstance, that it might actually lead to a. A benefit for the system and therefore a saving for employers?
Well, that's why there's provisional liability in the first place. Um, I, we did say that eleven A should come back as a reasonable excuse, and if I could just clarify on that, um. Reasonable management action, there, you need to follow certain procedures, you need to have a paper trail, you need. It should be obvious whether an employer's um taken reasonable management action in a proper way. If there's no paperwork, if there's, if there's nothing to prove that there's been reasonable management action. Then clearly there's no reasonable excuse. Um, but but workers' compensation is necessarily adversarial to a certain extent, and it's just unfortunate that. That 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 um those processes can exacerbate psychological injuries, but you've got to understand that there are there are hoops, there. You have to prove necessarily that nexus with the workplace, and that's very difficult to show within the workers' comp scheme. Which is why part B of our submission is asking the question, well, is it, is it fit for purpose? Because, yeah, in in trying to prove that nexus. You, it, no one's winning when it comes to a psychological injury.
Might just ask one further question, I mean, uh, the balance of psychological injuries is uh. Quite different in T M F to the nominal insurer, uh you represent private. Uh, industry, why do you think it is that there's such a divergence between the. Number of psychological injuries in the public sector as opposed to the private sector?
I can only answer to um the anecdotal stories I've been told, so I I was in the working group. Uh, for the code of practice for preventing psychological injury and um you had employers, you had. You had professors, you had unions, um and we all came to the table. And it took a long time to get the result, but we all agreed that it was a good result, the code that came out the other end was a good document. However, during that process, I I was shocked by um the stories that were coming out of of the public sector. And and appalled, and quite frankly, I I said at the time, you know, that that would never hold up. In the private sector, and my experience in the private sector is very much the S M E side of things. And it's been predominantly um residential construction, so um that that's my experience. Um, and I actually suggested at the time, perhaps they should segment the code and have a different approach. For S M Es, large business and the public sector. Uh, because it, the the experiences are so different and the dynamics are so different. Um, but in terms of of why the T M F is so bad, I. I've never worked in the public service, so I can't speak to that, but but there are differences.
So it's more that you think that there's something the public sector's doing wrong rather than something that the private sector's doing right?
I I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that, the very smaller businesses, in in my experience, um especially, you know, micro. And small end of town, they're very much, they look upon their workers as family, so that, but. But that not, may not necessarily be the case in in other businesses.
No, certainly small businesses do have that approach of, it is, it is family. You're probably not recruiting on normal selection criteria that you would have in the public sector, you're. Recruiting because it's someone you like, or it's the brother of someone you know, so it's very much. A a family type approach, so I think that gives a a different perspective, um but also I think. There's parts of the public sector who obviously are exposed to much more significant stresses in their day to day work than. In the private sector, um so I think to look at the T M F, I think it would be important to actually. Break that up further and say, what is it, or how many of these claims are actually coming from? The stresses of the day to day work that might be involved with being a police officer or a correctional services officer. Compared to what are the things that are coming from the culture in the workplace, because I think that would be more telling. Um, in relation to the T M F scenario.
Do you think it might be a factor of uh, you know, uh the public sector having a higher concentration of, say, knowledge work or. Human service type work and that that might, there might be something in that in terms of the driver of higher psychological injuries?
I might, I might make a comment, I I'd also written down here uh that the importance of work families. Um, in big, medium and small businesses and indeed the public sector, I think we've seen. Uh, particularly within the professional services and the large offices moving to active working where they're, uh, people don't have a place. Uh, that they call home at work, surrounded by people that they're familiar with and who they have long term relationships with in a working environment. Has has potentially been damaging, uh that of course was, uh that way of working has been embraced across the public services. Over the last few years, um I don't know whether it has any impact, I'm not an expert in this, but we do know. That uh that, you know, small cells of people working together closely. Uh, and consistently over periods of time is a healthy uh place for people to work. Um, of course, the public service employs hundreds of thousands of people uh in large groups. Perhaps also they were more affected by Covid, um perhaps they were more affected by working in isolation. Perhaps the last few years have been particularly stressful for the public service, uh given droughts, fires and pandemics. But that's all speculation, um we have no data on that.
Other questions from committee members?
Yeah, I'll pick up on that as well, um, I just want to tease out Mr Harding, um your suggestion in terms of a different scheme potentially, and I think that we've heard it. Today from your perspective, we've heard it from other witnesses as well, that it does, it's much harder to diagnose that something occurred at work when it's a mental. Condition, um and I think we heard from uh one witness this morning that sort of talked about. From their perspective, the flow on effect in terms of causing the causation, like when you have the. Relationship breakdown which is caused because of a, as they put it, a toxic work culture. That then leads on to a family breakdown, then leads on to all these other issues, that's hard to prove from their perspective, but in the same sense from what you're outlining as well, it can be. Hard to prove from an employer's perspective that something is not because of a work environment. How would you see that separate stream effectively running, um if we were to. Put workplace mental health injuries into a different category or a different scheme?
Well, I I think, I think you've hit the nail on the head, as it were, with with the fact that. Physical uh injuries at work are not only easy to place in terms of time and. Uh, placed often, causation is is easily investigated, for the principle we would like to see within uh within a different scheme that. Manage the much more complex areas of psychological claims and shared responsibility, so. Uh, the acknowledgement that there are more than one causal factor in many cases. Uh, and and that is a complex area, it's a complex thing, but nonetheless, if we embrace that principle. That would be a bedrock, I think, of 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 having much less of a transactional or adversarial approach to what are. A complex human uh human issues here, um how that, how that uh, how that might. Uh, develop into a, you know, a separate uh stream of the of the scheme or a separate scheme altogether. Um, our team, our policy team is working that through, we're not, we're not complete in that study yet. Um, but I think the 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 real principle here uh i- is that the, we're suggesting the present scheme which was very much. Uh, built, of course, around a physical injury, i- is frankly just not fit for purpose at all, because. Um, the causative factors and and the return to work processes and so on around psychological uh illness. Uh, injury uh are quite, quite different, and and that needs to be accepted. Uh, and whether or not, whether or not, whether or not the causation is societal, or whether it's family, or whether it's work, or whether it's a combination. Uh, of all of those things, um whatever scheme we develop needs to, needs to have that at the core of its principles.
I just want to pick up as well, and it sort of leads on from the chair's opening questions in terms of the labour market at the moment, of course, you know. Um, we are looking at, and I heard the Reserve Bank governor in our brief break before, um unemployment at more than fifty year lows. Um, we are looking at a very, very tight labour market at the moment, we need as many hands on deck as well, um to be able to help in terms of the labour force. What are you seeing when it comes to um workers who have a psychological injury? And their return to work rates compared to those that um exist for those with physical injuries?
Um, well, we know that there's a significant uh and statistical difference, so uh we know that the return to work rates across the physical. Uh, injury i- i- is is generally high, um because employers and employees. And the health, and the health uh professionals involved understand the process, and they understand the alternatives. Uh, for people who have in- incurred a physical injury, uh alternate duties, uh return to work schemes. And so on have been around for a long time and they're well understood, the process is understood, the culture is understood, the players involved. Understand how to uh deal with the, with with the issue and how to come to a a successful outcome together. I think these elements are all largely absent or misplaced uh within the management of psychological injury. In that there's a lack of understanding, there's a lack of uh process, there's a a lack of uh. Understanding communication between the parties, which therefore leads uh to this unacceptably high. Uh, rate of of unsuccessful uh return to work, and particularly return to work where they, where where uh where they've come from. I mean, to for people to not only have a difficult period in their life. Uh, because of psychological in- injury, but also have to change a job, uh it's it's not a, it's not a successful outcome, but unfortunately, it's all too common.
I think a number of physical injuries will resolve quickly, so if we're talking about a broken arm, a broken leg, a sprained ankle. We know we're going to get a quick resolution and we will get people back to work, even where we don't have that quick resolution, if it's um. A back injury and the person needs modified duties, the restrictions are usually fairly clear. Now, the person can't lift anything greater than twenty kilograms, or they need to be able to sit and stand, et cetera. When we talk about psychological injuries, if there's been interpersonal conflict. Part of the result, part of the return to work restriction may be that the person can't work with their boss. And so depending on the size of the business, the opportunities to actually provide alternate duties that can deal with that restriction. are a lot more difficult. But in other situations as well, you'll have the situation where because of the psychological injury, the person can't face coming to the workplace, whatever the duties might be. So you don't get that clear medical assessment of what the person might be able to do. And usually the first certificate for psychological injury will be time off work. Not necessarily with the treatment associated with it, just time off work. Um, whereas we don't get as many of those for a physical injury.
If I could just add as well that um you've got, if, for example, with bullying and harassment, coming back to the workplace tends to be not with that particular individual. So so they move to a different part of of the workplace. But then the injured worker, um a common reaction is, well, why am I being punished? They're the one who was a toxic supervisor and I'm the one being discriminated against being put into that area. So so that's, it's sort of layer upon layer of of difficulties.
Thank you.
I think we would welcome that the World Health Organisation is starting to put some guidelines around this and perhaps move away from the multiple different guidelines or 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 behaviours and patterns of behaviour or uh people frankly making it up as they go along because they don't have anything better to do. I think it's it, this is very important that we have some clear guidelines for employees, for employers and for uh and for clinicians, uh which which we all understand, uh which has common language within it. Um, so that we can uh we can move forward with a bit more confidence and a little less trepidation around what is obviously uh, you know, a difficult issue for both the employer and the employee.
And sorry, can I just add to that as well? I think going back to Sam Harvey's comment earlier, that in all of his time in medical training, there wasn't a focus on how do you help someone get back to work? So part of our base level issue is we have medical practitioners who don't know how to help people get back to work. We've got employers who don't know how to help people get back to work. Um, it's a major flaw.
And employers are scared of making the injury worse. If it's anxiety and depression and and the injured worker says it's from the workplace, then the natural reaction of the employer is, well, I'll just, I'll just give them the space they need to to get better. But but the theory with return to work is you need that open line of communication and and checking in constantly. So that's that's a tension there as well.
I thi- I think the phrase demystifying was used by an earlier witness and I think that's that's very important. Um, for smaller employers, uh this period, the these these processes and periods of dealing with an employee who has a psychological injury, of course, can also be very, very stressful.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we are out of time, but thank you so much for coming today and for presenting your evidence to this committee. Um, committee members may have additional questions for you after the hearing. The committee has resolved that the answers to these, along with any answers to questions taken on notice today, be returned within twenty-one days. The secretariat will contact you in relation to these questions. Uh, thanks so much for coming.
Thank you.
Um, so I would now like to welcome our next witness. Um, so if you would like to please state your name and position title and then swear either an oath or an affirmation and then we'll get started.
Good, good afternoon. My name is Simon Cohen. I'm the independent review officer. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. You able to move the microphone a little bit more forward? It's a bit, bit hard to hear or maybe a bit up. Yeah, great. Thank you. Um, did you have a opening statement you'd like to share with us?
I, I do, Chair.
Thank you.
Firstly, thank you for inviting me to appear before you today. Earlier this year, when deciding the theme of our annual independent review officer seminar, we assessed the mega trends in the New South Wales workers' compensation scheme. A clear standout was psychological injury claims. We knew that there were increased incidence of mental health across the community, increased psychological injury claims in New South Wales, and for many of these claims that they were more serious, with injured people having more time off work and with more workers with significant and permanent impairments. The independent review officers' work falls into two primary areas. Solving complaints where injured workers cannot sort out their concern with the insurer and providing funding through the independent legal assistance and review service for expert lawyers to advise and act for injured workers. Each of these areas is impacted by an increase in psychological injuries. More applications for ILAS funding as a result of psychological injuries have been seen trebling in the last five years with a consequent tripling in the expenditure required so that these workers can obtain appropriate legal assistance. And more hard-to-solve complaints which are often ongoing for extended periods and where the outcomes are less likely to be satisfactory from the worker's perspective. Our submission focuses on the issues we have seen in our roles and seeks to bring forward the voice of injured workers and their experiences. The workers we deal with are the ones where the claim has not proceeded smoothly, where liability, including provisional liability, is disputed from the outset and the matter is contested at each step, and where there are issues in the handling of the claim itself, including delayed decisions, multiple medical examinations and inflexible case management. The consequences for workers where their psychological injury claim is not well managed can include that treatment may be delayed, that they suffer financial hardship and an exacerbation occurs of their injury impacting upon their return to work and importantly, their overall wellbeing. Across the workers' compensation system, there are responses to the challenges these claims present, including clearer regulatory guidance, better case management and more research, as some examples in the submissions before the committee. Our view though, is that more could be considered to reduce the disputes and the impact of claims on workers and enhance their recovery. Areas we've highlighted in our submission that may warrant consideration include funding treatment for workers' mental health conditions without the need to establish liability, reducing the number of medical assessments for workers, improving return to work opportunities, ensuring the most skilled case managers deal with workers with psychological injuries and increasing the monitoring of decision-making in these cases. Our view is that there is an urgency to improving how the workers' compensation system responds to psychological injuries and I welcome the opportunity to discuss these matters with you today.
Wonderful, thank you. I'll um start with a couple of questions and then I'll hand over to my colleagues. Um, we have this almost unique set of circumstances where um psychological claims are increasing at quite a significant rate year on year, but we've also heard evidence of workers, um injured workers, um uh feeling like their claims have been unnecessarily delayed or denied. You wouldn't normally have those two things happening simultaneously. You think that if um a lot of claims were being delayed or denied, um you probably wouldn't have psychological claims increasing at uh at such a, an exponential rate. Um, do you have any views on, on why those two things might be happening at the at, at, you know, coinciding at the same time or what's, what's led to that position?
Uh, so I suppose my view and really informed by um our role and our place in the system is that um, uh, the increase that we're seeing in psychological injury claims and, you know, the CIRA data, I think increases in the last five years of around three thousand from around five thousand to eight thousand is being reflected and perhaps even amplified. Um, in particular in terms of then when workers need to seek legal assistance in those matters from, from expert lawyers. Um, and we fund those lawyers to provide that assistance. And when we look at, um, when we receive applications for funding from lawyers on behalf of those workers, we see that the applications are coming at an earlier point, uh much more frequently within three months uh or within twelve months of the injury than for other injuries. And that the nature of the disputes go to issues around liability, um but also treatment and weekly benefits. So it seems that um the areas of disputation fall across all of the key areas of um of, of claims management. One of the things I, I know many witnesses have reflected on this, um both in submissions and today, is there is something fundamentally different about a psychological injury to a physical injury. Um, that includes the mechanism of injury itself. Uh, it includes um the uh questions around whether the workplace is responsible for that injury and it also includes um the response of the workplace to an injured worker, both in terms of being able to return the worker to the workplace, um but also in terms of how the workplace can actually make adjustments itself, you know, whether it's if, if a cause is um stress caused by overwork or the like, how quickly can workplaces respond to that as against a true hazard or something along those lines. So our, our view is that um what we see in these matters, I suppose reflects the unique nature of them and does lead the question to um firstly, how fit for purpose is the current system to deal with some of those issues and, you know, what are the types of reforms that might be considered? But secondly, if the, we're working within the existing rubric, what are the opportunities to improve in particular the way those cases are managed so as to reduce some of the friction that exists in them at the moment?
Do you deal with, um, I know you said you dealt, deal with the, the, the more difficult disputes that arise. Do you deal with the, often deal with disputes between whether it was a psychological injury um at work compared to whether it's at, you know, home, their, their personal life? Does that often come up as a, as a ground, as grounds for the dispute that you have to deal with?
Yeah, so our, our role isn't to decide disputes. We have, I guess, two, two particular roles. If somebody's got a complaint, usually when a co-claim's already on foot, we'll deal with that matter. Um, and then uh once a worker is in need of legal assistance, we provide funding for those matters. And I suppose where we see disputation in those matters often goes to the question of whether work was the cause of it or something happening outside of the workplace. So as you say, whether it was something that happened at home. Um, but also um whether if, if in fact it did occur in the workplace, um whether there's a defence to that. Um, uh in particular, whether the injury was the result of some reasonable management action taken by the employer. And that's an area of um, you know, frequent disputation. Um, and it's an area where um there's a number of matters that we um seek funded and go through to the Personal Injury Commission.
What about the um, the whole person impairment, you know, the WPI at fifteen percent? Is that something that uh that you think is um problematic? I, I assume, I mean, I would just assume that a, a WPI at fourteen percent versus a WPI at fifteen percent is probably very difficult to, you know, you've got to draw the line somewhere, but it would be quite um uh difficult determining that and could be grounds for um creating um, you know, disputes between um, you know, workers and insurers, for instance.
Yeah, I, I suppose our view about whole person impairment um really goes to um the, the use of it as um a method to determine whether uh somebody should or shouldn't be entitled to weekly benefits or treatment. Um, so it, it's, it perhaps doesn't go so much to the percentage, whether it's, you know, fourteen, fifteen or whatever, but whether in fact a, um, a score that's been designed to assess impairment for the purpose of a monetary compensation is the appropriate tool to actually make a decision about whether someone is unable to work and they sure should receive weekly benefits or continues to suffer from the effects of the injury and therefore um continues to need treatment. So from our perspective, the recommendations from the McDougall review reflected in, in our own um views about that is that that's something that does need to be looked at closely. It clearly drives disputation because um it's such a critical element, particularly at the point in time where a worker may have their benefits seized, to be able to establish whether in fact they do or don't, don't meet those thresholds. But I think a question that comes before that is whether they're the appropriate mechanism to um, to, to throttle um access to benefits.
You're comfortable with the McDougal reviews? Happy to see them being implemented?
Uh, so I think um in terms of the need to review the whole of the legislation, we absolutely um agree with that. Um, we think there is a need to have a look at the question around whether whole person impairment is the right test to determine whether people have access to weekly benefits um and treatment. We've um been a strong um advocate for increased access to commutations and indeed um if there was that increased access appropriately, um uh you know, framed through access to appropriate legal advice and um, you know, oversight, for example, by the Personal Injury Commission. But subject to those matters, it would give people an avenue out of the um uh workers' compensation system that they don't have at the moment. And we think that that's something um that is, is worthy of progressing as well.
Just a final one from me. Um, liability that you, you spoke about before, um that um it's a significant problem determining uh liability. Um, but we heard from the um, the business New South Wales and Australia industry group just before that um if you didn't have to determine liability, so basically everyone was, was covered, um then who would have to bear the cost? And obviously if you're um a small business, you'd prefer not to have to pick up that additional cost in, in premiums. Um, which is a fair point. Um, I don't know if you, if you wanted to comment on that, but also I s- I suppose if you remove the um, the need to determine liability, then there's also a lot less sort of transactional cost arrangements or disputes between um, you know, insurer and, and worker. Um, I assume that's like a large degree of the, of, of the, you know, the um, how acrimonious the system might be, a, a large part of it would, would come down to, would come down to that.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I suppose one of the key elements that a range of research that I understand before the committee points to is the importance of access to early treatment.
Hmm.
And one of our observations would be that workers who feel um strongly and well supported um are less likely to need to access our services because they're not going to have disputes. Uh, when you have a look at some of the recommendations and some of the legislative changes that have happened in other jurisdictions, they've really focused on that front end about whether, you know, you need to make a liability decision at all during, you know, the first thirteen weeks. I think that's the Victorian model or the um, the Productivity Commission has particularly focused on treatment um in the first uh six months and whether you need to establish liability or not in order to be able to access that treatment. So I think that would be my first reflection is um it might not be an if, but when question of when liability may or may not need to be determined. I, I guess my second reflection would be then depending on what the policy setting was that was preferred, you would look at what's the appropriate way in which that would be funded. Um, and that's not a matter that um I've, I've given any thought to and I guess would be something that would be developed up if those sort of policy options were put forward.
We got a pretty lukewarm response from the employers on that front. I said, we got a pretty lukewarm response from the employers' representatives earlier on that proposition. They clearly don't want to fund it uh through the, the existing system of premiums.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just reflect that that would be one of the policy issues that would be, would need to be worked through if there was a decision made to remove the question of liability at an early stage of the claim.
While you've got the floor, Mr. Dantian.
Well, I, I wanted to just clarify in terms of the driver of disputes on liability. So can, can you explain to me the relate, the relationship of the employer in terms of the liability decision versus the insurer? Like, where, where is that?
Yeah, so um our understanding is that that, that decision is the insurer's decision. And we understand they consult with the employer uh in relation to um at least aspects of those decisions. Um, uh, our, our role, I guess, specifically focuses on the relationship between the worker and the insurer, both in our complaints handling function and the, and in relation to um the work that we've done through the uh, through the ILAS scheme.
So when you say the insurer, you're talking about the claims manager, not the nominal insurer? It's not made by ICARE, it's made by EML or whoever's.
So, so depending on the nature of the um claim, if it's a self or specialised insurer, um they, they would be made by those insurers directly. Um, in some matters, it's the claims manager. In some circumstances, ICARE has an ability to make those decisions directly itself, um depending on the na- the nature and the level at which those decisions are made.
Do you have any visibility of where those decisions are being made or is that something that's on the public record? I'm not sure.
Uh, I, I could take that on notice. Um, I certainly, on a case-by-case basis in complaints, we see who makes um those decisions. It may be a question that's better put to ICARE than to us.
So what incentivises the, the, say, in the case of the nominal insurer, either the claims manager or the nominal insurer, insurer itself to dispute liability? Is there something that you understand in terms of the um incentive structure that operates between the nominal insurer and the claims manager that might incentivise uh a more aggressive approach in terms of disputing liability?
I, I, that's not an answer, a question I could answer. I've got no visibility about those matters.
Right, okay. Uh, there was a proposition uh put in an earlier session, perhaps not on the public record. I think we had an earlier closed session with a number of injured workers uh that in terms of independent medical examinations, that uh the medical practitioner should be appointed by the pick as opposed to the nominee of the uh insurers or claims managers. What's your view about that?
Yeah, so I, I, I'd firstly reflect that a common cause of complaint to us is the number of medical examinations that injured workers need to attend. Um, of the IME complaints that we receive, uh around a third of those are from injured workers. So it's a much higher proportion than the general com- com- claims numbers. And what we know, both through what injured workers tell us and also a range of other research, is that attending those IME appointments can be quite distressing. Um, they have to retell their story on a number of occasions about what's happened to them, the impact that it's had on them and the like. So um our view is that uh exploring if there are opportunities to reduce the number of IMEs that an injured worker needs to undertake is something that would be uh uh contributed to reducing the distress and the impact of the claims process on the injured worker. Um, my predecessor, Kim Darling, uh led a parks project that looked at um a range of issues in the workers' compensation system. And one of the recommendations arise, rising out of that was to look at whether a single IME might be able to be undertaken with the agreement of both the worker and the insurer. Um, you know, from our perspective, um it's, it, there's value in looking at and deciding on the best mechanism to achieve that. But there's certainly um value in terms of what we see as the impact on injured workers from continued requirements to attend those appointments.
So just clarify for me, the IME is uh, it can be used for both determining liability uh but also in terms of uh suitability of treatment or so what, do you, do you have an understanding of what the breakdown is in terms of what proportion of uh independent medical assessments are done for liability purposes versus questions around appropriateness of treatment?
Yeah, I, so if, if I can uh perhaps reflect, so IMEs can occur at the request of the, you know, the, the injured workers. Um, lawyer may request a, a, an IME, so on their behalf, um at the request of the insurer. Um, and then uh, uh, medical assessments can occur before the Personal Injury Commission, um which, which then result in a medical assessment certificate that's uh binding on the parties, subject to whether it's appealed or not. And they can be used at many and varied points in the claim, whether it's from the decision around initial liability through to the appropriate treatment that the worker may receive. And critically, in the context of thresholds for access to. And critically, in the context of thresholds for access to be ongoing benefits. Uh and work injury damage claims, whether the worker actually uh has a a. A percentage impairment that enables them to meet those thresholds. So they're the most common areas that we see are. Those um medical examinations made. I I don't have a sense of the proportion at each step of those. I I guess what I would reflect is that injured workers often report that they're required to undergo multiple. Medical examinations for each of those steps, and that's part of what causes the distress for them. And one of our case studies points to an example where a worker had an independent medical examination for. Uh a a claims and treatment purpose, made a whole person impairment claim. And then was requested to go and undertake a further um assessment in relation to that. Now, we were able to solve that complaint uh through um uh through our complaints process, but I think it's a really good example. Of um the potential impact of those and the potential requirement to undergo multiple examinations.
One of your case studies says that that was the cause of someone feeling like they didn't want to live anymore. It's that severe.
So that that was what the worker reported to us, that they that they um and and that they'd have been requested to undergo repeated medical examinations. And that had been the impact. It did point in our view to an opportunity to improve the existing system in the context of. Con- consulting with the nominated treating doctor before um requiring a worker to undergo an I M E. To see what special arrangements might need to be put in place to support them, which we think is something that could be done within the existing system.
Thank you.
An interesting thing, well, I don't think we'd be able to get access to, would be how what the cost of the secondary. Um psychological injuries would be as a result of dealing with the um the the scheme. But I I think that would be very hard to get any figures on um the number of workers or, you know, the 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 dollar cost would be. Very hard, I assume.
Uh well, I guess what I'd reflect is um CIRA has done some work around proxies for that in terms of workers with physical injuries who then require.
Yeah.
Um psychological um appointments. Um. I I could, I'm happy to take that on notice and see what we might be able to find about secondary psych injuries.
Yep.
Um uh but um I I'd be upfront, I'm not sure whether there's a lot of lot more light I'll be able to put on it.
We'll ask CIRA and I Care as well when they appear.
Of course.
Um and um the other thing I wanted to ask was uh workplace rehabilitation providers. Um do you think that if a workplace rehabilitation provider was appointed. Earlier on in the process, so within the first eight weeks, instead of leaving it all to. The case managers in that in that that early time period, do you think that that would be beneficial in terms of. Getting, you know, taking some of the heat out of the system, getting people back to work more more quickly?
Um so so uh it's a it's an indirect answer to the question, if you if you'd excuse me, because I'm not an expert on.
No, no, sure.
Um the the contribution that they might make, but I guess I'd have two reflections about that. Um one is that where the relationship between the rehabilitation provider and the worker isn't working effectively. That does impact upon their recovery. And so the um often we'll receive complaints from injured workers where an issue arises around the rehab provider. And we inform the worker of their right to actually choose their own rehab provider, um which is something that they um then then can take steps in relation to. I think the second is um the focus upon understanding uh. How the evidence establishes the effectiveness of each of the proposed interventions, including rehab providers, is really the critical question, so. If that evidence established the value of that, then um you would think it would be something that would be closely examined and I think. That's much of the intention that sits behind Yasiara's standard of practice thirty three that really encourages. Um employers to have a look at workers who may be at risk of not returning to work and looking at evidence based. Um solutions, including rehabilitation providers.
Can I ask you about the standard of practice? Is that actually in operation? I I couldn't find a final version, only a draft consultation version as.
It it is in it is in operation.
It is in operation.
And if it assists the committee, I'm happy for us to make available a link to the committee to that after today or if that's of some assistance.
That would be useful. I had one further question, which was just about uh was in our. Uh first session uh with some injured workers, one of the the. Issues was raised was the inability of the independent review office office to make binding determinations. Uh do you have any comment about that?
Uh so I suppose um uh. Um my view about that is that at the moment, that's not our role. Um what what we're um charged with doing is seeing if we can resolve complaints and. In we bring to that, you know, an expertise and also um a strong relationships with insurers. That we're able to often put before them a persuasive information. Um where uh which which demonstrates that they might not have acted fairly and reasonably. And which causes them to change those decisions really quickly and promptly. And there's a very, I think there's a real value. Um to to those systems and processes. Um where um we are unable to um resolve those complaints, one of the things that I think works well in our. Um over overarching approach is that we can then connect that injured worker to a expert independent lawyer. Um who can give them advice and assistance, investigate their claim and uh either reach a solution with the insurer. Um or in appropriate circumstances, take the matter to the Personal Injury Commission. And we do have a number of threshold tests that we have around whether we would provide funding, um which. Ensures that cases that don't have a prospect of success don't proceed, but it equally ensures that those. That do are properly dealt with by um by the commission. I think there's value in having role clarity in these types of systems. If lots of people are doing the same thing, I think it can become. Uh quite confusing and I think a lot of work, you know, based on recommendations of this committee previously around, you know, being clear about who does what. You know, a single dispute resolution tribunal, a single complaints handling body. Uh and uh funder of legal service and a a a single regulator in the space, I think there's value in having that role clarity. Um uh through the system. If there are particular types of matters where people think we might have an increased role, um you know, certainly. We're happy to look at those um and give a view. We think, for example, that there is more that we can do with some matters that. Might otherwise land at the Personal Injury Commission, where we might be able to use our solutions approach to see if we can get a quick outcome. Uh we do that quite frequently at the moment, for example, where an insurer hasn't responded to a claim and as a result, the worker. Is entitled to take the matter to the Personal Injury Commission. When the funding application comes to us, we make quick contact with the insurer and say. Where is the where is the response? And often that response will actually be, oh, we actually agree with that claim, we just haven't. You know, got the answer to them or, you know, we were just in the process of sending it to them. And that saves time, um reduces disputes. Uh reduces cost uh and the impact on the worker, and we think there's value in exploring whether there are more opportunities to do that.
Do your recommendations have any standing with the Personal Injury Committee? Like, do they take them into account in terms of their determinations or do they just. Starts and over.
It it's sorry, no, the um we uh we don't make submissions or our re- our recommendations don't. Uh come before the um the commission. Wha- what we do have is an ability to investigate complaints and. Um we've recently refined our investigative approach so that where we don't think a complaint is fair and. A response is fair and reasonable, we undertake a much more forensic investigation of it. Um and we've indicated to insurers that if we, at the end of that investigation, still don't think they've put a fair response on the table. That we would make public um our view and their response in relation to that. I think that's got a a really strong effect in terms of. Um insurers closely looking at their views and giving them an opportunity, importantly, you know, to remediate the matter where they can. And and what I'm pleased to say is that through that process, we have actually seen insurers look really closely at decisions. And that they have actually come to solutions that I think are, you know, more creative than you might reach through a litigated process. And that have been to the benefit of the injured worker. I think that's really positive.
Further questions from committee members?
Okay.
Yep, Mr. Roberts.
Uh thank you, Mr. Khan. Thanks, first of all, for your attendance this afternoon and and secondly, for your detailed submission, which I um. I'd like to say I enjoyed reading, but enjoyment's not the word. I I was perplexed when I finished it. Um and that relates to the fourteen case studies you put in there and I congratulate you and your office on the the practical fear and. Common sense solutions you found of these issues that that have happened to workers, um which leads me to two parts. You say you investigate and 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 you've come up with these solutions to these what appear to me to be very simple. And easily fixed problems. Do you need a bigger stick? Um in terms of enforcement, how do we stop these very simple. Issues from happening again, because these these issues that have been detailed and outlined here are. Causing further aggravation to the injured worker. How do we stop that from happening going forward?
Yeah, I it's a very good question. I I suppose my first reflection would be that. Uh many of those matters that we've highlighted go to pretty basic case management um issues. And so there's there is an urgent need to improve the quality of case management um for uh for injured workers. And I think that's been acknowledged, it's been acknowledged by uh by I Care, it's been identified by a range of reviews. And we certainly, um our view is that that's certainly the case and. Our submission suggests that um where those improvements come on track, prioritising them for. Um workers with psychological injury, we think could be of considerable value. Um I think the second um is that um. The need to make sure that the system is responding in a joined up way is really critical. And one of the things that we've been really been working on since we've be- become an independent uh agency. Has been to uh better exchange information with um with CIRA as the regulator and also um. With uh I Care as the the major insurer. To firstly, where we're seeing systemic issues, to be highlighting those and seeing whether we can find solutions to them. But also to be providing much more comprehensive data and flagging significant matters with CIRA. So that they can use their um extensive range of regulatory powers to have a look at those matters closely. So um in that context of having role clarity, where we see things that are going wrong, I think we've got a a real obligation to. To call them out, you know, to to blow the whistle, as it were. And then to really hand it over to the insurers and the regulator to actually look at the the fixes or the solutions to those matters. And I think that um my my view is that we're we've gotten better at that and we can tip it, there's. Continued improvements that we can 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 make. And um I think the um. The prospect that we can make public things that we see where we don't think responses are appropriate. Is is a significant um uh tool that we have at our disposal. Um uh and uh it's one that um I think does lead to um good solutions um in certain matters.
Okay, and further to that then, can you see any utility or merit in the insurers having specialist case managers? That specialise in psychological injuries, because as we know, they're unique compared to a broken leg. You know, much more empathy is needed, different uh people skills, et cetera, communication skills, you know, such as the letters that we've seen set out that are.
Yeah.
That are, you know, false and and or threatening and intimidating. Do you think there's a merit in in having. Specialised case managers for these type of injuries?
So so I think our view is that um uh that expert case managers who are experienced in dealing with these matters is critical. Um and I think in addition to that, um the systems and processes in that are in place. To oversight the key decisions that are made in matters is also critical. Whether provisional liability is disputed, whether liability is accepted, whether there's a treatment dispute that's on foot. Whether weekly payments are going to cease, whether there's a concern uh about the um permanent permanent impairment which may impact upon benefits. They're all the critical areas where we see in complaints that we receive heightened distress from workers because they may no longer. Be able to access the psychological treatment that they've been relying on, or they may find themselves at risk of financial distress. And as a consequence, that can exacerbate um their psychological injury. So I think um. Uh expert case managers, but also a system that's i- identifies those key points. And then really, you know, drills in to make sure the best decisions are being made.
I think that's all from me, Chair. Thank you.
Uh any further questions? No, I think uh I think that's it. Thank you so much for.
Thank you.
For coming and presenting your evidence to the committee. Um committee members may have additional questions for you after the hearing. Uh the committee has resolved that the answers to these, along with the answers that you took on notice. Um be returned within twenty one days and the secretariat will contact you in relation to these questions. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes our hearing for today.